...for pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Douglas-Fleur Park, as outlined in the addendum.
Please vote. That carries.
It's moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Holland. The council resolved itself into committee of the whole, closed meeting, to consider the following items: advice as subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose; construction contract disputes, 197 Brock Street, 286 Baggett Street, and 105 Brock Street; and B, a proposed repending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, and advice as subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose; federal divestitures.
Please vote. And that carries. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We were just meeting in closed session, talking about a couple of different items. One, in regards to a construction contract dispute, 197 Brock Street, 266 Baggett Street, and 105 Brock Street, and then also in regards to federal divestitures. There was an item C in regards to a matter with Doug Flure Park, but that was not dealt with tonight. So with that, I will ask for an approval of the addeds. We have a few items. First of all, a few motions of congratulation, condolences, speed of recovery. So before we do that, we'll just ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by councillor Camden, seconded by councillor Allen. The council rise from committee of the whole, closed meeting, without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. So again, on to the addeds. We do have a number of motions of congratulation, condolences, speed of recovery. Under new motions, we have a replacement motion for number three, as well as two additional motions, five and six, and then a number of items of communication. And as for a mover for the addeds? Moved by councillor Sanick, seconded by councillor Bohm. Call the question. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I, Liz Shell, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion three regarding a casino, as my son works for the Ontario Lottery Corporation in Gatineau. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other declarations of pecuniary interest, we have no presentations this evening, and so we will move on to delegations. We do have a number of delegations that are listed. Our first delegation is Valencia Gaspar and Mary Farrar from Friends of Kingston Inner Harbour, will appear before council to speak to new motion three with respect to the Wellington Street Extension. And just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes, but then time for questions after that.
Okay. So, okay. Thank you very much for putting up with me yet another time, the people who have been in council before. And I'd like to introduce you to Sarah and Valencia, who are two young planners who've recently joined the Friends of Kingston at Inner Harbour. So I'm going to start a little bit with the history of the Friends of Kingston Inner Harbour. We were established in 2004, and what we did back then was to save the city from the terrible mistake of replacing Metalcraft Marine with the K-Rock Centre. So we were very instrumental and helpful in that. And we can, we, in 2012, we gained charitable status, and we have been involved in a number of things, including cleanup, stewardship of the inner harbour, looking after heritage buildings, the trail going from La Salle Causeway up to Kingston Mills. Here, we're being helped by high school students, pathways to education, and Leers College, and a number of events that we've held over the years. In 2012, we had a celebration of 300 years of boat building in partnership with Metalcraft Marine and the Clayton Antique Boat Museum. In 2013, we celebrated with the Water Access Group, the Shoreline Shuffle, which was 14 or 15 art installations, and a walk along the waterfront to try and convince city staff of the real importance of our waterfront, and time to visit it with a new working group. Last year, 2014, we had Kingston's first ever juried street art festival on the wall that actually won the award from the Kingstonist of being the most exciting new cultural event of the year. And here's a picture of the park preparation for the concert that we had that evening, just to show you how totally gorgeous that area is, and what an amazing tourist venue it can be. Can you imagine cars going by at 70 kilometres an hour through that stunning space, which it really, really is an untold asset? We also hosted the Rideau Voyager Canal Brigade, 80 paddlers from across Canada who came to Doug Flure Park to paddle up the Rideau to celebrate the fact that we are also actually one of less than half a dozen countries, I believe, in the world, who are both a UNESCO World Heritage Site and have access to being a UNESCO Biosphere. We have a trailhead with the Front Nakarch Biosphere, that I think it's a sadly underrated, underlooked at asset in our tourism community. The Friends of Kingston Inner Harbour also deal with environmental issues and environmental education. And here we have a picture of the threatened northern map turtle that is making an amazing comeback in the park, and the turtles crawl across the, what will be, hopefully not, the Wellington Street Extension, to lay their eggs along the wall. In addition to all of our national and, you know, international, actually, events that we have, we're also a family place, where on every Friday, we have family picnics in cooperation with the Boys and Girls Club, the Kingston Field Naturalists, and various other groups to educate the community and have a family picnic. We're not just about the park, we're about the trail. And this, I believe, for me, is the most awesome cycling trail in Kingston, going up to the entrance to Bell Park. And, you know, if the extension goes through, this becomes a bike lane on a major highway, and the beautiful lilacs and trees that we enjoy in the springtime are gone. So here is the path of the road, the Wellington Street Extension will come right through. You can see in the top there, I'm not so good with this, so, okay, up there, that's where that beautiful trail is, going up there, and here is the yellow path of the road coming down through the park. We think it's tragic if that goes through, so destructive of such wonderful assets that we have. Here is the cross-section of the proposed road, and in the purple lines there, you can see that 10 to 12 metres from the road, the wall to, it takes 10 to 12 metres of space before the road even starts. And in this cross-section, I mean, I find it really quite upsetting. Here's the green line, the, I'll just point. We've got, we've got a bike lane, we've got a sidewalk, we've got a ridiculous median, we've got a car lane, we've got another car lane, we've got another bike lane, we've got another kind of crazy boulevard, and then we've got a three-metre-wide pathway. It just takes up the park, it eliminates that usable green space, and we find it hugely invasive.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so here we go, down, we have already great arterials, we think that the, that's overemphasized the fact that, that it will be overcapacity. We can go into that with questions if you want later. Some alternatives to cars, expensive mistakes. These are cities that have had parkways, and they're now spending a fortune to get rid of them. We don't want to be in that position, we don't want to build this crazy parkway in the first place. The road is not the right answer.
Thank, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? So, this is the part where I have to be the bad guy. Unfortunately, our procedural bylaw does prohibit applause in council chambers, and so I appreciate the sentiment and the enthusiasm that's in the room. Certainly, you can show your support in a silo way, but I do ask you if you respect that rule, that would be great. Questions from council? Councillor Strom.
Thank you, your worship. Ms Farrar, I'd like to know what your groups, what is your vision for the future, in the big picture perhaps, if the road is not built?
Well, I mean, thank you for your question. We see our vision actually as being continent with the city's vision. We see our vision as carrying on with the four pillars of sustainability. If we start with the economic, I mean, the tourism possibilities in that park and in that trail are completely awesome. We already have the Dragon Boat Festival once a year. This year, we're having an international festival again, with theatre on a barge coming up to entertain people in the park. There's the possibility of runners and swimmers, and extreme sport event where people could run in the park, you know, swim in the weeds, kayak up to Bell Park, charge up the hill, you know, come back. There are all sorts of sports tourism possibilities with small craft, because after all, it is the premier centre in Kingston for small crafts, rowing, canoes, kayaks, stand-up boards. So that's the economic one. And also, we feel that the current roads, like Montreal Street, can be fixed up with the 35 million that would be spent on the extension, and we're all for economic development in the park, but we're for the new economy, the new economy of the young urban people who walk, not drive. So, okay, economic. Social, of course, you've seen the pictures of the families in the park. Cultural, well, there we are, with our On the Wall Street Art Festival. You know, in Montreal, they get 800,000 people a year for their street art festival. I bet you if we had that, you know, on an ongoing capacity, way, every year, and it were promoted by the city, we could get 50,000 people here. And what about things like the Kingston Blues Festival? I mean, spill over into that amazing, beautiful waterfront space there. And the trail. I mean, the trail is just so gorgeous, and I would like to see the trail extended, you know, in the north section of the extension, fingers of old K&amp;P line, you know, where cyclists can come along the Trans-Canada Highway and find a pathway, designated pathway, down to the city where, you know, where they can stay, because cycle tourism is such a growing thing, and I believe we're the best place in Ontario for cycle tourism, it's so untapped. Anyway, yes.
Any other questions? Councillor Strom.
So you mentioned the cycle tourism, or possibly maybe cyclists from the north of Kingston to use a new pathway, perhaps, to get down to the inner harbour area. Is there, do you have any suggestions for how we would improve the existing, you mentioned Montreal Street could be improved, do you have any other suggestions of how we could improve getting people to the downtown with the existing infrastructure?
Well, I mean, the K&amp;P Trail should be finished. I mean, there's simply no doubt about that. The Trans-Canada Trail is having a huge celebration in 2014, and we're one of the few cities in Canada that don't have a marked route going from the Trans-Canada Trail to their downtown. And there are various spurs of the K&amp;P Trail. I really firmly believe that we should just put something in place, you know, in 2016, it should go in the strategic plan, we should, you know, make that connection from Bennington Park to the downtown, even if it has to be on Dalton Street with trucks. Well, you know, life isn't perfect, even if you have to get off your bike and walk across the bridge at the, you know, across the railway at Division, go for it. Then go along Elliott, and go down the already created spur at Haggerman, and then go down Montreal, and then go through the park. I mean, there are other options too, but I think, yeah, that's critical, that we get that done.
Councillor Deale.
Yes, thank you. Question for Sarah Minns. Don't look surprised. Welcome to Kingston.
Thank you.
I understand you're a professional planner, and that's recently moved to Pittsburgh District. I'm wondering, have you had an opportunity to look at the proposed plans or the EA, and what is your opinion?
So even though I live in Pittsburgh District, I do use the waterfront downtown, as well as the park, the Douglas Flure Park, and I find it a huge asset of Kingston's. I think that it's an ecological asset, and just as we manage our infrastructure assets and our asset management plans strategically tell us how to do that, we should be managing our ecological assets. Unlike things like roads and water sewer mains, they cannot be replaced, things like parks cannot be replaced once they are destroyed. So I think that we should preserve it. I think that definitely downtown needs better accessibility from public transportation, being in Pittsburgh's district. It's very hard to get downtown, it actually is faster for me to walk downtown than to take the bus, which I find a problem with. So for my generation, that is the no-car generation, we need more, more options. There's been study, after study, saying that bigger and better roads does not lead to alleviation of traffic congestion. So, and also on the EA part, I have had a chance to look at the EA, the EA done in 2006, approved in 2008. Nowhere does it, for example, have the northern map turtle, which is of concern, so the social and ecological systems has changed since that EA has been done, and I would suggest, from my professional opinion, that it needs to be redone with significant public participation following it. So not just consultant consultation, but public participa, public participation with something like, say, a resident committee being struck, or a multi-level governance committee being struck.
Great, thank you very much. And just to let you know, there is an express bus in here near future.
I know, but it's only on certain times. Come on.
Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. A question for the delegation, I'm not sure who would like to answer it. Sarah, you just referred to the turtles in and around the area. I am curious about the, your perspective on the impact of, on wildlife for the development of the, the extension.
Okay, I'm gonna take this, and then Mary can take it. I'm not a transportation planner, I'm not gonna pretend to be one. However, I have dedicated the last four years of my life to water, including drinking water, including infrastructure, everything to do with drinking water systems and watershed planning. And I can tell by the extension, and where the extension is, and we can go back to that map, it certainly does not follow any best practices that I know of for watershed planning, and it should be, it will significantly impact that, that ecological system. But when we think of VAs, I mean, we do think of the environmental, but I like to think also of the social ecological systems. That's a park where people in that area, a very diverse area, so, social economic area, where people go and they recreate and congregate, and they, and they exercise, and I think that it will also have an impact on, on our social ecological system, because humans are part of the environment.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I just, the, you spoke about the bike trails and restoring the K&amp;P Trail, but this plan provides a multimodal link that we're looking at here. Would that not achieve the connections that you're sort of speaking about in terms of providing more access and connections to the north end? Is that, how is that not achieve that goal? And that's...
Okay, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I prefer off-road trails. And I think an awful lot of people do in Kingston, seniors particularly, moms with kids, I mean, people are scared of going on major highways on the side of the road. My daughter, who's a triathlete, won't take her children riding around their bikes in Kingston. So although, yes, there are bike lanes on the proposed Wellington Street Extension, it's just not the same as that beautiful trail you saw a picture of through the trees, as the Haggerman Trail that has been started, as the Bennington Court section done over towards Sidney Road. I mean, and as all the various spurs that exist that could be off-road. I think that, in truth, the city of Kingston has been really far behind in the whole recreational cycling aspect of active transportation. Active transportation is more than a bike lane. Active transportation should also include helping people become comfortable, become skilled with their, you know, cycling, and feeling comfortable on off-road trails that will then turn them into active transportation cyclists. And we have, we're just haven't, haven't been there at all.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our second delegation this evening is Justine Scala, will appear before council also to speak to new motion three with respect to the Wellington Street Extension.
Hello, I'm, I'm used to talking in microphones, so let me know if I sound funny. So, mayor and council, well, the very first thing I want to do is to make it clear that although I'm a business owner, I own Minotaur Games and Gifts Downtown, I'm not speaking on behalf of Minotaur or on behalf of the BIA. I'm here as, yes, as a business owner, but also as a resident, and, and so I just wanted to get that out first. What are my reasons for not wanting the Wellington Street Extension? Well, like so many others, I want to preserve what little unspoilt waterfront remains in Kingston. I want, I live, work, and play downtown, and see Doug Flure Park and the proposed sections of the K&amp;P Trail as an essential part of the downtown experience. As a downtown business owner, I would love to see more intensification of downtown, more development in, in downtown and in some of the areas we're talking about. But I think that a vibrant waterfront park and trail are gonna do far more to attract people to living downtown than a new road that in fact takes away from the waterfront. I, like so many others, I value the wildlife that live along the Cataracway River, and the fact that green spaces help foster community health. I, I spend a lot of time in Doug Flure Park and on the trail myself already, and I know it does a lot for my, both my mental and physical health. So I could continue in this vein, but I want to touch on something in particular, and it's been alluded to already, but I want to sort of expand on it. And, and that's that in our rapidly changing world, one thing is becoming clear, fewer young people drive cars. Many of them don't even have driver's licences. I know this anecdotally, of the 10 people who've worked for Minotaur over the past year, only two have owned cars, and the two that do are over 40 and don't drive them. They use public transit or walk. One uses public transit, the other walks. The rest, bike walker, take public transit as well to get to work, they don't own cars, most of them don't have licences. So I did a bit of research, I didn't want to just use my anecdotal evidence. I looked at a study by the AAA Foundation for Traffic Safety, the American Automobile Association for Traffic Safety, and it shows that one in three teenagers are just not interested in driving anymore. Well, 20 years ago, more than two-thirds of teens obtained their driver's licence before the age of 18. Today, only 44% of teens have their licences within their first 12 months of eligibility. And then a quote from the New York Times, which actually is referring to another very interesting study by the University of Michigan, so the quote is as follows, "Younger people are likely to drive or even have driver's licences than past generations for whom driving was a birthright and the open road a symbol of freedom." Research by Michael Civic of the Transportation Research Institute at the University of Michigan found that young people are getting driver's licences in smaller numbers than previous generations. The, the same article then goes on to talk about baby boomers. Baby boomers too are aging out of the daily workforce and need to commute less. If the decline continues as expected, the report states, "Driving could remain below its 2007 peak through 2040, even though the population is expected to grow by 21%," end quote. So I think, I think it seems fairly clear that we're not looking at a growing automobile culture, we're looking at a shrinking one. And then I looked at public transit in Kingston, so, and this is from the City of Kingston press release from December 12, 2014. "The 2013 route realignment and the addition of the Express One route have led to higher-than-expected increases in ridership, helping Kingston Transit hit the milestone 4 million mark." I'm sure you've all heard this, but bear with me. "Phase one of Kingston Transit's redevelopment plan included the launch of the first express route in September 2013 and a realignment of existing routes. The changes have proved popular. By December 31, 2014, Kingston Transit expects that it will achieve a 12% increase in ridership over 2013." And that's a 7% increase over its annual target of 5%, and that's just last year. So, to me, it looks as if people are turning to active transportation, the, the number of people who are driving cars are diminishing. Do we want to spend this money on a new road that may, in our near future, not be used? Or do we want to improve our existing ways of getting downtown? Montreal Street, for example, could use a bit of work.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. And, and then, and certainly our bus, I know there's going to be more, further improvements to our transit system, so, you know, some, even more money there could probably be a good thing. So ultimately, as a business owner and a person, I, who lives downtown, I think that the Wellington Street is, is not only not essential, but in fact would be a bit of a boondoggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Councillor Allen.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. So you said you were supportive of intensification and building up downtown. Do you think that there would be increased traffic demand, increased parking demand associated with that, and that we'd have to find routes for that? Or do you think that the existing infrastructure, as you implied, will, can handle that if we're bringing more bodies into downtown, especially to work?
I do think there's value in looking at some of our existing infrastructure, which I think is going to need refurbishing anyway. So there's gonna have to be dollars anyway put into, probably into fixing up Montreal Street in the not-too-distant future. But I think, based on what I've just said, that an increase in population doesn't necessarily mean an increase in traffic, and I think that many of the reasons people move to downtown is to get out of the car lifestyle and into a lifestyle that includes walking and enjoying the downtown on foot.
Just, just one more quick question.
Sure.
The, you're, you're a young person, a young business owner, that's great. I love it. How do we, Kingston isn't necessarily known for people like you and me, who are under 40 and successful. We tend to be students. I'm trying to be polite here. How do we, like, if that's who we would want to build the demographic for, how do we, like, how, like, if they're not here, how do we, why would we create infrastructure for them? That, I guess that's my question.
Who's not here?
So...
People like us?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, first of all, I think you're under a serious misimpression, and it's very flattering, but I'm 47 years old, not...
I feel great about that.
And, and secondly, I actually have, I actually know from my own business that there are more and more people my age and, and younger, but young urban professionals moving to Kingston is the fastest-growing percentage of my business, and I can see it downtown, and I've spoken with many other business owners who would concur. So it's a demographic that's growing because of the high cost of living in the other major cities, and those people are moving to downtown because they don't want to spend their time driving. So in fact, successful professionals are moving to Kingston because they like the pedestrian lifestyle or the cycling lifestyle, and they don't want to commute. They're sick of commuting from Mississauga to downtown Toronto every day.
Thank you, and I apologize for my misestimate on your age there.
No worries, thank you.
Councillor Camden.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that an increase in population doesn't necessarily mean an increase in traffic. Can you name... Can you name an instance where that actually occurred?
To be honest, I, I was looking at studies that, so the, the study that I looked at, done by the University of Michigan, actually looked on a countrywide level, and they studied 15 different countries, and with three, three or four exceptions, all of those countries were seeing an overall diminishment in traffic. So no, I don't have specific cities, but although the study, I, I mean, I didn't copy it down, but the study itself did refer to specific cities and how young people are choosing alternative methods, and therefore the traffic within those cities is diminishing. I know there are exceptions, Toronto, for example, is becoming overwhelmed, but the growth there is, is so exponential that I think, you know, it's, it's an exception, not the rule.
Thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, I'm the Williamsville councillor, and there's lots of development going on in Williamsville. Are you aware that the condominiums that are now totally sold out, that less than 40% of the parking spaces that were required have actually been purchased, proposed, purchased? And increasingly, we're finding, are you aware that we're finding a lower need for, for parking when it's along an express bus route like the Williamsville area?
I have, actually. I know also that Anna Lane is being built with fewer parking spaces than there are residents, and I know a bit about, I have a strong connection with Toronto, and I know that a lot of the new condominium developments there are deliberately being built with far fewer traffic spaces than there are residents. And it's not been a problem, the residents are not moving there because they want a car lifestyle, they're moving to downtown Toronto because they want the downtown experience, they want a walking experience. I feel we're getting a little bit away from the Wellington Street Extension area, and I do want to say that I really feel that the park is an amenity for people who are living in downtowns without cars. I think that we will attract more people to live in our city, to live in our downtown if we don't put a road through that park, if we don't put a road beside the KMP trail than if we do. And I'm all about encouraging people to move to this town and improving my business and the other businesses and the general economic welfare of the city.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I was just curious, you, you mentioned some stats about fewer, younger people getting their licenses up until when they're eligible, but there's also, was part of that study the fact that it also takes longer to get your license now because it's a graduated process that actually takes multiple years to actually attain your license? And then, sorry, there's, there's just a quick second part, too. And then with that, even if fewer people are, or if, say, it's 30% are, are choosing not to get, the other 70% or whatever's left over would still be getting cars. So you would still, over time, as population increases, still have a need to increase your transportation routes, because there is always going to be people that are going to use cars. Not everybody's going to, there'll, there'll be a maximum transition to active transportation and people that will walk or take a bus. There will also always be people that use cars. So my other part of the question is, what other alternatives do you foresee if, if not that? And are there, are there, maybe other ideas we're missing that we can help transition people so that we don't necessarily always need to build more roads, even though there will be probably more cars coming at some point?
Okay, so the study that I was referring to actually is, points out very clearly, and I unfortunately only had five minutes, so I couldn't, I picked a couple of tiny quotes. It goes on to talk about how people well into their twenties are not choosing to get licenses as well. And it specifically talks about how the fact, this, this large Michigan study, which is available online, that if you, that the growth will not exceed the shrinkage, that in fact the reverse is true. So the fewer people driving cars will exceed the rise in population. And if you add in the fact that the baby boomers, who are the largest, still the largest segment of our population, are retiring, will no longer be commuting, that takes even more cars off the road. So the study, I mean, they can't see into the future any better than you or I, but the projected estimates are that ridership will continue, continue to drop and that the number of cars on the road will continue to decline.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our third delegation this evening is Laura Murray, Anne Laheed, and Saida Jaffer from Wellington X, who will appear before council to speak to new motion number three with respect to the Wellington Street Extension.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, Kingston residents, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Wellington X, and I'm here with Saida Jaffer and Anne Laheed. This is a group that was founded last summer when a number of us realized we didn't have a clear idea of what was happening with this road. And so we set out to read all the reports and sort out where it was going and where it was coming from. And we've shared what we found on our blog, which has reached many people, and we also intervened in the municipal election campaign so that councillors would realize this was an issue that would need to be revisited in their mandate. This is the cover of the environmental study report of 2006 that governs the project at this point. And it describes what the Wellington Street Extension is going to look like, how long it is, how fast it is, how wide it is, and what the anticipated traffic will be. I want to draw your attention to one of the photographs on the cover of that report, because I think it perfectly captures the perspective of the people who wrote that report. This is how they saw the neighborhood. This is quite different from the photographs you saw with Mary Farrar's presentation, and the methodologies in the report really went along with that perspective. So for example, when they chose to study the wildlife in the park, they did it in December. When they chose to study people's transportation choices, they did it in the winter. So they didn't find any animals and they didn't find any cyclists. Even on the territory of traffic, which is the expertise of the people who wrote the report, there are so many unanswered questions. Although a case is made for the Wellington Extension, many alternatives are not pursued and others are just mentioned and dismissed. So just as an example, this is the Tannery Lands, and a very important possibility to pursue is opening up River Street to Rito and putting Russell Street through into the Tannery Lands. This is just dismissed with no discussion. So all in all, this report we find really unconvincing. The report in 2006 said that the road would cost $16 million. More recently, staff have been operating with the assumption that it would be about $35 million. You're going to hear later tonight that it's cheap again, it's more like 2006 prices. So I, I'm sure that there will be an explanation for that. It's not clear how much it will cost, but I want to clarify that for our group, the cost is not the primary problem with this road. If it were free, we still wouldn't want it. We wouldn't want a big road, and we wouldn't want a small road through this area. And I also want to state that our group, Wellington X, is against the northern section of the extension as well as the southern section, largely because nobody has been able to explain to us a compelling reason for it. So today's motion is much narrower than that, but we want to keep the north section as an area of concern. The letters that you've received will show all sorts of reasons why people in Kingston are concerned about the road, but really what I want to focus on is that, from the point of view of council, the extension, and, and you will know this, it doesn't meet the expectations and the vision of the policy documents that have been developed since 2006. And that's why it's really time to look at it again. And if you look at those documents and you know them already, they emphasize all kinds of sustainability issues, neighborhood consultation issues, habitat, waterfront, and green space issues. And I won't read through all this in detail, but you can find all this language about reducing pollution. The official plan talks about shorelines and open space inventory. So while the extension is in the official plan, it doesn't belong in the official plan. It doesn't jive with the values of the official plan. Another change since 2006 has been the provincial policy statement on planning of 2014, which is binding on the city of Kingston and emphasizes active transit and public transportation. So our position is that it's time to get ourselves out of this idea. We need to stop spending on the WSE, stop buying land for it. We need to direct staff to determine if there actually is a need. If there is a need, to find alternatives, other ways to move cars. Cars can go other places, the river can't go any other place, it's there. Other ways to move people. And then, as we started to talk about in the other delegations, how we can imagine and explore opportunities for the area and the route if the extension isn't there.
30 seconds.
And that can involve recreational possibilities, economic possibilities, new ways of imagining what the development on the Tannery Land might look like as a green development, and other kinds of transit possibilities, and so on. This council can leave a legacy. I think this is not saying no to something, it's saying yes to the commitments that have already been made in policy documents and really bringing them into being. I, I'm on the Heritage Committee, I know it's a historic town around here, but I don't think we need to be using planning principles from the 1970s. We have to take sustainability goals seriously, and we have to create certainty so that residents and investors know what they can work with in thinking about a better future for our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Counselor Allen.
Hi, through you. Just based on your last comment there, this extension has been in the plans, and, well, the visions may have changed, it's been in the plans for a long time, and there have been investors who maybe have been planning around working with that road. How do you think they would adapt to a sudden change in the plans from municipal government?
Well, I understand that cities are allowed to change their policies, and if you're an investor, you're taking risks. And conditions may change, and sometimes things will turn out better than you thought, and sometimes they'll turn out worse than you thought. My understanding is that the city has made no commitment in terms of development charges, that particular payments made were going to result in this road. That's my understanding so far. You know, worth really kind of clarifying, but that's my understanding. So I, they'll adapt, I guess, is, is the best answer I could say.
Thank you, it was a hard question.
Counselor O'Shanock.
Thank you very much for that delegation. It sounds like you really know the environmental assessment done in 2006, inside and out. And going back to that EA, do you remember, like, did they give justifications for having the Wellington Street Extension as opposed to any others? Did it look at any other alternative options?
It very quickly dismissed a bunch of other options. And the main justifications given in the EA are expected traffic congestion. Another is congestion on Rito Street is one of the major things they're concerned about, which frankly doesn't seem to be an issue right now. Another is the desire to have a beautiful waterfront entrance into the city for tourists, which we think could be met in other ways. And what are some of the other ones? Yeah, just concern about congestion in general. Oh, another justification in there is that we need bicycle paths. So the idea is, well, we'll be due this road, and then we'll give you a bicycle path. So our suggestion is, well, if we need bicycle paths, why not just build the bicycle paths a lot cheaper?
Thank you.
Counselor Stroud.
Thank you for that excellent presentation, and it's just completely not related, but I would have voted for you for Chair of Municipal Heritage Committee if I could have. I, I actually have a delegation to add when, when this delegation is finished, so that's...
Okay, so just before I do that, then, are there any other questions for this delegation? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. So I will now entertain any additional delegations. Counselor Stroud.
Thank you. I would like council to waive the procedural bylaw to allow a fourth delegation from Mr. Ed Smith, the Chair of the DBIA.
So there's a motion from Counselor Stroud. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Cannon. So we will vote to waive the rules to add a delegation, requires two-thirds to pass. And that carries. So we will invite Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and members of the council. As stated, I'm Ed Smith, Chair Downtown Kingston, and I'm representing the Business Association tonight. You all should have received letters in your packages earlier this week from the, from myself as a representative of the association. So first off, I just want to say that Downtown Kingston is pleased that the motion that was on the agenda on Friday is being replaced with, with a motion that asks staff to bring back more information and the possible options for replacing the southern portion of the Wellington Street Extension. I also want to make clear that Downtown Kingston, at this point, is not necessarily in favor of the southern portion of downtown, of the Wellington Street Extension, or against it. What Downtown Kingston is concerned about is the future health of Downtown Kingston. Just because Downtown Kingston's been successful for the last 50 years does not mean that it will be successful for the next 50 years. Downtown Kingston, I think as most people are aware, is in a little bit more fragile position at this point in time. And over the last number of years, we've lost a number of major anchors in Downtown Kingston, that's in our apartment store, Indigo Books, the Empire Theatre. And we've seen major expansion in retail in the north of Kingston as well as in the west, and there's been a strong push to have expansion in east Kingston as well. So one of the ways Downtown Kingston is to stay relevant in the future is if more people live in the area. So Downtown Kingston supports intensification and development of the Tannery site, of the, of the former industrial site in the city of Kingston. These are important elements to make sure that Downtown Kingston stays relevant and is sustainable. These new communities are going to need access into and out of downtown. Otherwise, these lands are less likely to be developed. That may or may not be the Wellington Street Extension. But until we have an answer to what it will be, you know, we strongly urge that council, before they even contemplate cancelling the Wellington Street southern portion of the extension, that they have a strongly supported alternative plan that traffic experts say will work effectively for the next 50 years. Downtown Kingston is part of what makes Kingston special. It's a significant driver in the tourist industry. It employs over 10,000 Kingstonians. The businesses and property owners in Downtown Kingston provide over $12 million in taxes annually, commercial taxes. So all this, all this is just to say that Downtown Kingston is, the health of Downtown Kingston is important to all Kingstonians and significantly relevant. So again, I just want to urge council that they have an open mind in terms of the experts that come back with future information to council, and that they approve a plan that is going to support Downtown Kingston and Kingstonians for this area of the city, that there's going to be transportation options that include vehicle options, because vehicles aren't going away, that allow people to come downtown if they want to, and, and, and leave downtown when they need to go east, west, north, and maybe not, maybe not south so much. So that, that's my presentation, I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Would you say that right now, the biggest thing that council could do to help downtown though is to encourage intensification in the downtown area, to get people to live as close to downtown as possible in bigger numbers?
And absolutely. So the, you know, developments that are, you know, coming forward on the north blocks is going to be important to Anna Lane, we're looking forward to that opening and more people living there. And that's why the Tannery site is, you know, one of the largest, you know, pieces of land, certainly in the old city of Kingston, and it's close to downtown and provides, you know, the potential market and customer base for downtown, as well as the old industrial lands. So that's why the, it's important that, that, that people that are potentially going to live in those areas have a way to, you know, get downtown and, and get back home when they have to. So yes, more people living in the old city, intensification, development of, of brownfield sites and other potential sites. sites and other potential sites is important for downtown.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm curious about the implications on, of congestion on downtown businesses. I know that we hear, and perhaps you do as well, maybe you could speak to it, that a lot of people don't want to be shopping downtown or going to a restaurant downtown because they find it difficult to find parking. So, bringing more cars in, for example, I know you're not exactly a proponent of the extension, but in, but in creating intensification, are, are you concerned with greater numbers of people coming into the downtown, trying to park to access the businesses? And do you have any ideas on, on what the impact might be?
Well, I mean, you know, given even the best-case scenarios, you know, in 20 years out, you know, 75, 80% of Kingstonians are going to still be using a vehicle to get around. And, you know, I support, and Downtown Kingston supports, the increase in, in public transportation. But if, you know, we said that we're not going to offer any parking in the downtown area, then we'd be eliminating 80% of Kingstonians from using that unless they happen to live, you know, within walking distance or reasonable bike distance. So, you know, every downtown, you know, has parking, and it's a necessary part of doing business, and the community expects there to be parking in, in downtown, because everybody can't ride a bike.
Okay, seeing no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no other delegations. We have no briefings tonight. We do have a petition. Petition bearing approximately 230 signatures was received by the Planning Committee on February 19th, 2015, and received in the City Clerk's Department on February 23rd, 2015, and reads as follows. "We, the undersigned concerned citizens, urge Kingston City Council to not approve the application for a license for Category 2 Class A quarry below water, and not approve the Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment, an injunction to stop the quarry operation from its continued expansion, and risky below-the-water-table extraction." It's referred to City Council. Are there any other petitions to present? Okay, seeing none. We have motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Graphoid on receiving an investment of $8.1 million from Sustainable Development Technology Canada for the design and construction of a mesograft graphene production facility in Kingston. We welcomed Graphoid Inc. to the Kingston community last year and wish them all the best as they continue to lead the way in innovative research, development, and commercialization of graphene, a groundbreaking new carbon material. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Turner, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Maggie Doyle, Human Resources and Organizational Development, on the passing of her father, Thomas Bernard Fitzgerald, who is in his 92nd year. Thomas will be greatly missed by his extensive family and friends. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Neal, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Nightlight Kingston for the success of their third annual Coldest Night of the Year fundraising walk held February 21st, 2015. This year, the walk had 130 participants and raised over $34,000 for Nightlight. Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Holland, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family of Dr. James Lowe, obstetrics, gynecology specialist, and founder of the Museum of Healthcare, unique in Canada. He was a member of the Order of Canada and passed away recently at the age of 90. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the condolences of City Council be extended to the Sisters of Providence and the family and friends of Sister Penny Flanagan, who passed away February 12th. She was a great champion of the poor, a faithful vigil keeper, and an inspiration to us all. She will be missed. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that the best wishes of Kingston City Council be extended to Paul Schlesman, City Hall and Features Reporter for the Kingston Week Standard, as he recovers from a recent heart attack. We wish Paul all the best in this time of recovery and look forward to his return to council chambers in his coverage of city business. With that, ask for, Mr. Clerk, if you can call the vote. And that carries. Onto deferred motions. We have one deferred motion on our agenda, moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Osanik. Whereas there are a significant number of possible ways and means in which better city and school board relations may benefit neighborhood communities and the city as a whole through various initiatives, and whereas such initiatives may include but not be limited to systemic operational and capital funding efficiencies and cost savings, space and program development, and sharing in the areas of recreation, housing, community hubs, government and agency services, business and economic development, such as space for microbusinesses, artisans, artists, and alternative businesses in health, food, and furniture, home care, and senior care, and therefore be it resolved that City Council invite the Limestone District School Board and the Algonquin Lake Shore Catholic School Board to establish a joint Kingston-Limestone-Algonquin Advisory Working Group, the CLOG, to explore and prioritize projects for collaboration and cooperation based on mutually identified and supported priorities and goals, and that the CLOG consists of councillors, trustees, and senior staff as mutually agreed to by both organizations, and that staff report back to council with a recommendation about how the CLOG will be structured and how it will carry out its business by or before May 19th, 2015 council meeting. So, the motion will go back on the floor, will reset the, the clock in terms of who has and has not spoken to it. So, Counselor Hutchison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. At the last council meeting, the motion as indicated up there was deferred to myself and the seconder, and to senior staff. And we have a, we have an amendment that essentially simplifies this and seems satisfactory to senior staff. So, I will start reading it, but there it is there. So, it's amended by deleting the second whereas clause in its entire key, and starts by saying, whereas school board and city staff, city staff are currently working on a number of partnerships and other partnership options may be identified over time and as a result of expected school closures. And whereas City Council is interested in facilitating improved communication between council members and school board trustees, and, then, it's further amended by deleting in the paragraph four the words explore and prioritize, inserting the words to share information and identify potential. So the new paragraph reads as follows. Therefore, be resolved that City Council invite the Limestone District School Board and the Algonquin Lake Shore Catholic School Board to establish a joint Kingston-Limestone-Algonquin Advisory Working Group, the CLOG, to share information and identify potential projects for collaboration and cooperation based on mutually identified and supportive priorities and goals. And, and it's further amended up there, by deleting the paragraph five, the words trustees and, inserting the words and trustees with support from appropriate, and by deleting the word both and inserting the word the. So the new paragraph reads as follows. The CLOG consists of councillors and trustees with support from appropriate senior staff as mutually agreed to by the organizations, and, further amended by inserting this paragraph, that staff be requested to communicate with school boards in regards to their interest to be part of the joint working group. We had some discussion about that at the last meeting. And further amended to say, to add the paragraph, that should school boards be interested in being part of such a working group, staff be directed to report back to council with a recommendation about how the CLOG will be structured with a defined mandate and term before May 19th, 2015 council meeting. So much of this follows the structure and intent of the previous, the central original motion.
Okay, so there's a, a motion to amend the original motion. Do I have, is there a seconder? So that's seconded by Counselor Osanik. That's a, that's a whopper of, of an amendment. Is it possible that we can just see the amended, what the amended motion would look like? There it is, good. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so, there is a, a motion to amend on the floor. Counselor Hutchison, do you wish to speak to it?
I said, well, I think the, most of the argument for this motion is to, is about improving and giving greater profile to cooperative and collaborative potential projects between the school board and the city. We're always encouraged to think about breaking down silos within the city, between departments, so we can be more effective and more efficient. This motion is about breaking down silos between institutions. What's, what we have at the current time is shrinking school-aged populations, is a number of schools that are underpopulated are actually being closed. These are public assets that in both the, in both the Algonquin and the Limestone Boards that we have paid for. And I think it's important, before we dispose of them one way or the other, is that we find if there's other ways to do that. And since the demographic issue will be visiting at some point probably every neighborhood in the city, that it's important for every district council to be aware that this is an issue. Plus, it's an opportunity. It's a potential possibility, well, it's not a potential possibility. It has the possibility of allowing us to use school space in different ways and make this a more creative and energetic city. That's the purpose. To do it, we need to have a forum for that collaboration and cooperation.
So, so Counselor Hutchison, I appreciate the arguments you're giving. They're more towards the motion as a whole rather than to the amendment. So I'm just, I'm going to give you allow, an opportunity to further to speak to the motion, whether it's amended or not. But again, if we can just focus just on how this motion is different from the previous one, if you want to speak to, just get support from council.
I can, I can say that it's so, what it is, is that it is simplified and streamlined and made so that it, the amendment centers on just setting up the structure to increase the profile and, and prioritization processes possible, and goes in, less into what the possibilities are. Okay? And that's why my seconder and the senior staff are more amenable to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to the amendment only? Counselor Neal.
Yes, I want to thank the mover and the seconder and staff. I think this is a, a much, a much clearer motion, and so I appreciate it. My only suggestion would be, it is a fairly complex amendment. In future, if within our addits, we could have a copy of the proposed amendment as it's coming down, it would be helpful, rather than me squinting at the screen. So, just for future reference. But I totally support the amended, the motion as amended.
If there's anybody else that wishes to speak? So we'll call the question on the motion to amend. And that carries. So on the motion now as amended, Counselor Hutchison, you have three minutes on the clock if you want to speak to the, to the motion in general.
I spoke to it.
Okay, thank you.
I spoke to it. I thought, previously, you, you were quite right. I didn't directly, right, speak to the amendment because the same rationale supplied for the original motion still applies to the amendment, so I'm not going to repeat myself.
Okay. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question for staff, but it's related to the comments that I have as well to the motions, I'll save that to the end. I, I support the motion. However, I'm, I'm not, I think one of the issues that we're not really addressing is, than that I hope can be dealt with through this motion, is the improved relations between the school board, the city, and the public. And so I would like to know, I will ask my question now, I guess, to staff. In terms of the process that would be, you're putting together the, the, the structure of this group, and, and if you're thinking about the process involved in meetings, is there, through you, to staff, is there, will there be, will it go along the lines of city meetings with, that are open to the public, with an opportunity for public participation?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the first thing I, I guess I want to comment on is whatever mandate is put together would be put together, obviously, with the collaboration of the school board. This is not something that we would draft on our own and bring to council. Obviously, we would want to make sure that there is buy-in from the school boards. In, in terms of the actual holding of meetings and where those take place, and whether or not the public is involved, I think that's something that, again, would, should be discussed with the school board, who, school boards, who would be part of that working group? And, and then we could bring something that, back to council that would be supported by all parties.
Okay, thank you. So, that's helpful. I guess then, the elephant in the room is the fact that this is coming out of a very difficult process, a very difficult park process. The new high school issue has affected members of the community in Kingston in a horribly negative way that, which we never want to see repeated, I would argue. So I want to have some faith that this motion can deal with that, especially considering it references school closures. We know what that can do to communities. I want to know that the work of this group is not just about finding efficiencies, which I think actually, the current model of staff at the school board and at the city can address the issue of finding efficiencies without having a new group formed. What I do want to see, what I, where I do think the value is in this motion, is in improving the process, which is why public participation is of the utmost importance, improving the process and improving relationships, and those, those two go hand in hand. So, I just, I just bring that up as something to consider when we're moving forward with this, with this group. I don't have an amendment, because I think it's really hard to determine a wording for something as complicated as what I think is actually the true rationale of this motion, and that is to build trust and build relationships. So, thank you.
So, so I think, just to comment on that, when staff report back with a mandate, then that probably would be the best time to debate and discuss exactly what that framework looks like. See, Holland, did you have something to add?
Through you, Your Worship, to council. That is, that is a point of reference that we would take with respect to this. We understand that the motion does talk about the, the circumstances and building a relationship. We also recognize that there are processes and responsibilities within school boards in terms of administering policies. So we, we need to respect that and have input from the school boards before we can bring back a recommendation, as is requested here, to have council acknowledge or confirm the, the mandate of the committee.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, my, my thinking on this, this motion has changed since it was here last, last meeting. I also had a meeting with the Vice Chair of the School Board, the Limestone District School Board, since, since last meeting, so I got more information and more input from their perspective, or at least that one Vice Chair's perspective. The thing I want to stress first is that the motion was amended last time by Counselor George, and that amendment passed to add the Catholic School Board, the Algonquin Lake Shore Catholic District School Board. And that was a source of great concern to the Vice Chair of the Limestone District School Board, not because it's a different board or anything like that, but because the Catholic Board is elected at large, and, and the, the, the school closures are a central Kingston issue, so that the Catholic Board is, 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 has a totally different perspective on the going concern. And the, and she also said that the Limestone Board itself, many of their members, well, in fact, four out of their nine members, trustees, are from rural areas, because the Limestone Board is much bigger geographically than the city of Kingston. And she said that those, those rural members would all have concerns with this type of... And she said that those, those rural members would all have concerns with this type of arrangement because it's, it's made up of city councillors, trustees, and it's, it's likely going to be discussing things that affect the inner city of Kingston. And so I was surprised by this input and, and, and since I take it seriously and I, and I know that they would have to be willing participants, I have serious doubts about whether this initiative would succeed in doing what its excellent intention is of doing. And Councilor Hutchinson is absolutely correct to bring it forward, but having heard the input from, from one of the participants and having thought about it myself, I have, I, I really think that we're better off addressing the collaboration on a, on a, on a case by case basis with the, the stakeholders of, you know, that would be affected. And that includes the public. This, this clog would not include any members of the public. It would essentially be another political organisation made up of members from three different bodies. So it would, it would operate at that level and it wouldn't necessarily solve any of the problems with, with the public. And it might, as Councilor Holland just spoke to reopen old wounds when it comes to the, the different communities that were negatively affected by the board's process in the first place. So I reluctantly will be voting against this motion.
Councilor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Taking into account Councilor Stroud's comments, it, it strikes me as interesting that in the school board or in the school world, the rural voices outnumber the urban voices and yet in the, the council table, it's the reverse. So that, I, I sort of take those comments with a grain of salt. Hopefully, the council presence can help balance out some of those concerns and it'll be an equal table. I, I do understand though the trepidation of repeating a process that a lot of people found painful before and, but I, I think that we need to look for collaboration and make this move on our commitment to collaborate with them and see where we can go in finding these opportunities. Just a couple of weeks ago, in the Toronto District School Board, I made an interesting proposal to city council and city staff at, in, in the city of Toronto about sharing the assets of both organisations to better the people that they serve. And I think those kinds of conversations are the kinds of conversations we're looking for in this group and that's why I'm going to be supporting this group. Thank you.
Okay, I've got quite a speakers list developing here. Next on my list is Council, Councilor Neal.
Thank you. I continue to support the notion of at least inviting the Algonquin board to the table for a couple of reasons. One, they indeed, I mean, they don't have tremendously declining enrollment in their high schools. They don't have a high school problem the way that the public board does. However, they do own property in their elementary schools that are about to be declared surplus. So they may indeed, if they're at the table, have an opportunity to make some proposals because we should remember that the co-terminus boards have to clear a declaration of surplus of a school with the other board. They're first on the cascade for accepting property. So I, I think that inviting them to the table, they may choose not to for the very reasons that, I mean, they may believe they don't have a dog in this fight and why should we have to attend all of these meetings? They may choose not to. But at least we should invite them to the table. They may very well be able to help in the process. I don't understand the rationale why there would be any negative aspect to them being, having a representative at the table. So I think we should continue to support this, this motion as amended.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Although I do respect the intent of this motion, I still have some concerns even with the, the motion that's on the floor right now. And it's, it's something that Councilor Stroud alluded to, it was, it's the size of the group and getting that many people, those, that many groups with this many kind of large geographic area, different needs, different desires and putting them all together, adding a couple of council members, and what's going to come out of that? It, I, I think it's the size of this motion. This is, this is not just something small that we're dealing with. We're, we're going to be adding a lot of staff hours. We're going to be adding quite a workload to, to staff. So it's something where, I guess, one of my questions to staff would be, and I think I asked something similar last time, do we already do some of these things? Is this something that's already kind of happening on its own with some of the conversations that have been happening? And on top of that, could a much simpler motion not maybe, without kind of creating a group and a, and a mandate and defined term and having this monster created, which although it has a good intent, could just really drain our, our resources and our time? Is, is there a way that we could go about this that would possibly be simpler without some of the, you know, different groups all in one room vying for different things?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I, well, I think it's in part a difficult question to answer, but let me try. From a staff perspective, and I, I think this is where I, I need to make the difference between the, the staff level and the political level. So from the staff perspective, we are currently working with the school boards on a number of different initiatives. For example, last week, we did discuss a number of initiatives at the Rural Advisory Committee that would take place in the rural area and, and also in the urban area, which will be coming back to council at the next council meeting. So those discussions already take place. I think what the intent of this motion was based on my conversation with the mover and the seconder was to try to create a mechanism to improve the community, the direct communication between the school board trustees and the council members. So I, I mean, from a staff perspective, those things do take place at the, at the level, at the trustee level and the council members. I think that's where the intent was in terms of improving that communication.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Turner.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Councilor Bohm, I agree with what you're saying and I think that's a good point made, but I do support the initiative and I think it's a really good idea to reach out and communicate with others and collaborate and exchange information. And maybe we could make it more of an ad hoc group where it's loosely arranged, we can meet, not everyone can meet at the same time, so it doesn't turn into a monster. And we could collaborate and discuss our issues and keep it less formal, maybe more informal as a group, but establish the relationship and discuss all our issues together. Thank you.
Councilor Sanik.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just to address the monster comment, I do know that there will be councillors, senior staff and trustees on it, but it doesn't have to meet monthly, you know, when myself and Councilor Hutchinson talked to Commissioner Hurdle, we were talking about like once a quarter, maybe only three times a year because summertime, you know, our meetings go down. So it doesn't have to be meeting very frequently at all, but during the park process, we did, you know, with the last council, we had a representative going to those meetings, but the problem was that the meetings were being held on Tuesday nights where we're at council every other Tuesday. And so the public were saying, how come we don't see council there? And, and it's like, well, what do we do? We have this conflict. So just like Commissioner, Commissioner Hurdle was talking about, we're just trying to improve the relations and making sure that the communication is there. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bohm, will you take the chair?
Yes, I will and I recognise you.
Thank you. To, to summarise some of the comments that have been said around the table, it seems very clear that this is an issue where the devil is in the details. This thing could very well be a monster and be very unproductive, or it's something that actually could be focused and coordinated on communication, public relations, repairing damage where there, there has been damage in the past. And so really, I think it's very difficult at this particular point to be able to make a judgement on which case it is until we get more information. So at this point, I'm happy to support the motion to extend the invitation. I think that politically, I think that that looks good. We give them the option to say yes or to say no, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to come back and say, well, what are we saying yes or no to? So if it comes to the point where we can narrow it, we can focus it, where it's going to be constructive, then at that point, I think that I could support that. But if it's going to be something larger, then I think we need to really take a second look at that. So happy to support it, at least at this stage. Thank you.
And I return the chair.
Next on my list is Councilor Camden.
Thank you, through your worship. I'd like to ask staff, it seemed when the motion was first brought to the floor, it, it seemed as though we may have been caught off guard with regards to being aware of how would this, this was going to be created and how it was going to be implemented. In the future, is there a better way for us to approach coming forward with motions of this nature?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We would always welcome a discussion with staff before a, a motion is initially crafted so that we can provide you with any information or advice that we may have that may help with crafting your motion and, and hopefully having all the information first time around.
Thank you. Do we, I, I personally, I feel as though I'm not going to be supporting the motion for similar reasons to Councilor Stroud and Councilor Bohm. I, I don't feel like it's a knock to the relationship with the city and the school board. I, I, I have family who, my, my, both my parents work in the education system as I was growing up. I think that close ties with the city and, and educational institutions is paramount and education is paramount in our society. However, I feel like that's what, you know, cell phones for and, are for. We, we all have them. We can all do this stuff without taking up a great deal of staff's time. And for that reason, I, I don't feel it's necessary. I feel like it's too broad. I feel like it wasn't necessarily well worded or, or well thought out before it was put on the table. And for that reason, I'm not going to support this motion.
Next on my list is Councilor McLaren.
Thank you. I believe it is better to try and make a good difference for our community than to fail by not trying. These are adults who can think for themselves and who will be able to decide how much benefit they can get from this. And I believe that it can be still malleable in that respect, so I will most certainly vote for this.
Thank you. If there are no other speakers, then we will call, oh, Councilor Hutchinson, you have the right to speak last.
Thank you. This motion actually has been in the works with speaking to numbers of people, parents, school board trustees, past and present. And Councilor Sanik reminds me of why this got started. It's not just about assets. I was the council representative to the North Park part and I spoke to them at least two or three times, attended three meetings. It was difficult to go because their meetings coincided with council meetings, committee meetings and the like. But the main thing is, when I went there, I spoke to them about issues that they're not used to, to taking into account when they're doing something like the park process, such as economic development, sustainability. I pointed out that there was great concern in the business community from the DBIA, for example, and that there would be no elementary school in the downtown if we continued on the way we were going. And I spoke to them about our sustainability plans and our, our sustainable Kingston plan and, and so on, and how we found that was a matter of concern. But the issue there is we need to improve the way in which we communicate that to them on a consistent basis. And we need to work with them and have them see that the school is not just an educational institution, it is part of the fabric of our socio-economic system. And it is a community asset, it can be a community hub, and often is. So when I was speaking to them, we realised that we needed to make this improvement. We needed to be in consistent contact with them. Now, consistent can mean any number of things. But as Councilor Sanik pointed out, it could be four times a year, it could be three times a year. But the point is to make sure that our voice, our plans are being taken into consideration. As in the provincial mandate for doing parks says you will, but it was a very small part of the considerations when I was at those meetings. So, but a very big concern of parents who lived, in this case, downtown, but like I said, it'll be other places because the demographics are not going to change in the next four or five years when the park comes up again. So that's part of it. But they also have, as I said, assets and we have assets and perhaps we can work together on those. So, because it's a broader issue, it's a broader issue of economic development and social development. So that's why this was brought forward. It doesn't have to be a big, a monster, that's an interesting word, but it could be, you know, an elf. The, the point is that it's, question is what the quality of the communication is and whether people are listening and willing to adapt accordingly. And that's why this motion was brought forward. A lot of things have been, it's been streamlined, as I said, and that's fine. The main reason for doing that and make it general is so you do not foreclose on what your partner may want to discuss. That's the reason why you do that. They may have different, they do have different priorities than we do, but they share certain experiences in common community life with us. And we have somewhat different priorities in the way we make it, but we share that community life. And we have, in the end, we're going to be, there's going to be consequences to the choices we make. Let's know what those consequences are. You do that by communicating. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the motion as amended. And that carries by a vote of nine to three. Next, report number 23 from the chief administrative officer.
It's moved by Councilor Turner, seconded by Councilor Camden. Then report number 23 from the chief administrative officer consent be received and adopted.
There are three clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Councilor Neal.
C, please.
C has been separated, so we will vote first on items A and B. A is stop up, close, declare surplus and dispose of the road allowance between lots 25 and 26, concession five, Berbrook and Perth roads. Item B is unopened road allowance access and improvement agreement over a portion of the unopened road allowance on lot 27 between concessions eight and nine. We'll call the vote. Item C, block four, North Block District, status update, further deferral of issuance of RFI and RFP for block four. Councilor Neal.
Just a very quick question and I, I, I did give a heads up to staff prior to, to the meeting. I know that when we are initially, and I'm definitely not trying to reopen the whole tragically hip way debate, but one of the things that was part of that motion that was passed on that particular day was that there would be a historical recognition for the fact that that was Barrick Street and to explain some of the history of that, that particular, and the heritage of that particular street name. I was wondering where we're at with that because I don't believe that's happened yet.
Commissioner Beach.
So that motion still stands with respect to direction to staff and there is still the project that's moving ahead and I'll get some more information as to the timing of when that'll actually proceed. That's probably small enough that it doesn't need to be deferred through this deferral of the North Block redevelopment.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you. Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes, I was, I was questioned by the media twice in the last three days about this. So I wanted to give Commissioner Beach a chance to explain the rationale behind this. I know for my, for my purposes, for what I understand about it, I'm fine. But I thought in public she could summarize why we are putting off developing the Block Four at this time, please.
Commissioner Beach.
Thank you. And for those of you who haven't had a chance to read my riveting report, there's been a long history with respect to the city wanting to redevelop the North Block lands and in terms of trying to find redevelopment for the city-owned lands. But we also feel that it's bigger than just what the city-owned lands could achieve in that area, that there are also a number of privately owned blocks. So what's happened is when we did our most recent development process and were directed by council to go ahead with an RFP process, there's been interest on those private lands. And what we want to make sure that happens is that there's not too much development happening on those blocks, that we can't manage the parking supply as the construction occurs. So the report to council is asking for a deferral of the sale of the city-owned block so that we can use that for temporary planning for parking. When the other planning applications come ahead and as council sees those planning applications come forward, we can make a decision further on as to how the council wants to deal with the blocks that the city owns. The Block Four is the one that we did a lot of public consultation on. So if council asks us to defer, I think it will do a very good thing from a market perspective, that there won't be buyers out there that are looking to the city to purchase this land, and we won't spend a lot of time dealing with those unsolicited proposals as they come forward. It will also allow us to deal with some temporary uses as the construction and as the development approvals go ahead on the other blocks.
Thank you.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just a question, because I think we're talking years before this would now move forward. In terms of the culture plan, there's a discussion of the new civic exhibition space for the arts and affordable live work space for artists had been thought might be part of this plan. I'm just checking that we're not wedded to it. If we can find a better, another civic exhibition space, if that's what the community wants, or a city museum, if that's what they want, that basically we're saying that's wide open. It's not tied to the North Block.
Commissioner Beach.
I think that in terms of the timing with the culture plan being prepared and the vision that was being done around the North Block, that the two just coincided. So we wouldn't view that this would be an exclusive looking at North Block. In fact, the TET Center is a good example where we're looking at exhibition space and are implementing that. So no, it would not tie any of those initiatives specifically to the North Block.
Okay. We'll call the question. And that carries. Report number 24 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It is my pleasure to introduce report number 24 of the Administrative Policies Committee, and I would ask that council receive and adopt it.
It's moved by Counselor Stroud. Seconded by Counselor Bohm, that report number 24 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There's just the one clause. It's the item A is the 2014 External Audit Plan. Any comments or questions? We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report 25 from the Environment, Infrastructure, and Transportation Policies Committee.
Thank you. I have the pleasure of presenting report number 25, Environment, Infrastructure, Transportation Policies Committee duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
So it's moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Allen. Report number 25 of the Environment, Infrastructure, and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Again, just the one clause, item A, increasing diversion of residential waste. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, just quickly, we had a lot of conversation about this at the EITP, and I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're taking some of the options to the public, and then they'll come back to EITP and to council for further discussion and decision at that time. So we don't need to, unless you really want to, but we don't really need to talk about it too much right now.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, and the one amendment that did go through that bears some explanation. We've always had a very ambitious goal of 65% conversion, a diversion of our waste through recycling. We seem to have frustratingly plateaued at about 55%, and that's what we're trying to address with some of the new policies coming forward. We amended the report just because councils live in four-year eternities, and we should be held responsible, I believe, for our portion of the four years. And so I think it was a very sensible amendment that what we said was, we were retaining the 65%, which I believe was possibly a 2020 goal or 2022 goal. But we're saying that we have an interim goal of 60% by the year 2018, which is when we complete our term. So we should be the council held responsible, not pushing it down the road for the next council. So that's the rationale for why, why we amended it to give us an interim goal.
Counselor Asanik.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, one question to staff. So when we get the public feedback, that's going to be a questionnaire. Is the questionnaire out right now? Has it already passed, or is it about to? I've lost track of that questionnaire, and that's why I'm asking.
Mr. Giles.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we're working on the questionnaire. We're setting up meetings with student representatives from St. Lawrence College and from Queens, and we will be discussing their concerns as well to make sure that the questionnaire addresses student issues. And then we're meeting as well with Communications Group. They will be part of this meeting. We've had one meeting with them already. And Communications will help us develop the best ways to get the questionnaire out to the public, because there are many means to get feedback. And then we will be putting the questionnaire out through the different means.
Great. Thanks very much. We'll do whatever we can to make sure the public knows about it, too. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, we'll call the vote. And that carries. Nothing from committee of the whole. We have three information reports. Number one, 2015 municipal debt limits. Number two, strategic planning information, projects forecasted in the 15-year capital plans. Number three, Counselor Hutchinson, do you have a question for number two or for number three?
I do.
Okay.
I just didn't know if you wanted to go through them first.
Yeah, no, I normally read them through fairly quickly, but yes, just interrupt me if anyone has any questions. So Counselor Hutchinson on information report number two.
Right. This deals with projects forecasted in the 15-year capital plans, which have been adopted and some which have not. And in particularly of interest tonight is the commentary on the Wellington Street Extension. And what's surprising here is the way in which the total amount to be expended has gone down markedly. And this is interesting, and I'm going to direct my question to Director of Engineering. In January, I spoke to the, Mr. Van Buren, and he, I didn't speak to him, I emailed him and asked him a question about the cost. And the cost came back 35, conservatively, quote, conservatively, $35 million. And in the Kingston Strategic Plan 2011-14, it says $35 million. So I'm assuming that that was adopted in 2011, so time passes, prices rise. So perhaps that explains the conservatively bit. So, but here, what I get is, and the way that was broken down was the northern part was 12 and a half million, and the southern part was 23 and a half million. Also conservative numbers, obviously. So here, I, what I see is that, as I added up, is it's $20.7 million. So I would like to know what it says here, that these are updated cost estimates undertaken in 2013, but in January, a month and a half ago, that wasn't referenced. So...
So, okay, so can we get to the question?
Get to the question? Sure. The question is, these are reduced cost estimates, which reflect, and I quote, "reflect an approach to final road design construction." And then a second part, "and the application of new and advanced technologies." What are we referring to here? And how does it account for an almost 50% cut in some of those extensions?
Mr. Van Buren.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Just to give a little bit of context to the numbers here, the initial cost estimates for Wellington Street were derived in the 2006 Environmental Study Report. And in that document, it refers to $16 million as being the overall construction cost for that project, which excluded any of the costs associated with the potential for cleanup costs associated with any level of environmental contamination. When we looked at incorporating an updated cost estimate in the 2009 development charges by law, what we did was to include an inflationary factor to the $16 million, and then also put in a very conservative cost estimate for, for the potential for environmental cleanup costs. And that number was basically looking at the costs associated with excavating all of the contaminated material, removing that and dealing with it through a landfill site. So the, the cost that went into the 2014 10-year capital forecast that was in the 2014 budget binders was $35 million. So that looked at, at trying to be extremely conservative with those environmental cleanup costs, and then also conservative in terms of looking at the inflation of the construction costs over that period of time from the original estimates in 2006. Beginning in 2013, but not completed until 2014, we re-engaged our consultant to look at updating those cost estimates so we could have that available for the 2014 development charges by law. So through that process, they re-looked at, at the cost estimates that were developed for the project and looked at, at the numbers that you now see reflected in the report here tonight, which bring the cost back down to around, I think it's close to $21 million. That is based largely on the notion that there may be other means by which we can deal with the potential for, for contamination through the corridor. That may be through options that are related to detailed design that may look at trying to limit the impacts on any contaminated material through the corridor. It may also look at what are the potential for new technologies that may be out there in the marketplace to help to deal with some of the remediation of any contaminated materials. But again, I'd stress that at this point in time, the only information that we have as it relates to the Wellington Street project and the level of environmental contamination was through a Phase One environmental site assessment. So that basically looks at where along the corridor would we anticipate finding contaminated materials. There has not been any further work that is done, although it's recommended to then move into a Phase Two environmental site assessment, that then would look at soil and groundwater sampling, a characterization of the type of contaminants, and then a plan in terms of how we would, we would more appropriately manage those, those contamination or the contaminated materials. So that is still work that is out in advance of us. So I hope that that provides you a little bit more context in terms of how those numbers have changed through, through the course of years since 2006.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes. Well, the key word that I heard there was "may." We may find these technologies. We may find a way to get rid of this contaminated soil. Just as a partial, well, directly involved, do, when did we use the Rosam Fuels property when we were reassessing the need for...
So I'm going to stop you there, because this information report is just dealing with the cost figures, and staff has given the information about where those cost figures came from. The questions you're getting at are going to be perfect for all of the information that staff is going to be coming to in more detail if, in fact, motion three passes. That's the sort of questions that should be directed at that, because that's starting to stray way, way off of what this information report is trying to get at.
But it underwrites all this, right?
It does. So I think I allowed the first question because it was absolutely fair, but I think staff have answered the question about what we find.
So I have another question. That is, what is the class of estimates that give you the answer 21 million? Is it a Class D, Class C? What class, what class of estimate is it?
These are class estimates, and I always get the, the letters incorrect, but this would be the lowest level cost estimates. These are based on, on a conceptual design for the Wellington Street Extension. So I impress upon everybody that at this point in time, there hasn't been any work that has actually looked at a, at the, even a preliminary design that then would eventually morph into a detailed design that then would allow for further refinement of cost estimates related to the project.
We do, we do have a concept plan. You've shown it to me, so I assume that's what that was. At least, that's what I stole.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The environmental assessment and the environmental assessment report, which was referenced in 2006, the information that is contained in that report would be the equivalent of a conceptual level design for the Wellington Street Extension.
Do we have any concept? Well, we've seen numbers of estimates come before us, and those estimates, at the Class D level, it seems to me that, and I'm wondering if you would concur, that those Class D estimates are often out by 25, 30, 35%. It's not that the norm? Because as they get refined, C, B, A, they get, the price almost always goes up. In fact, I can't think of a case in the time I'd be on council when they haven't gone
Again, through you, Mayor Patterson. I think in answer to that question, it is, it is very much related to the specifics of the project and the context around those projects that would help to inform whether or not those estimates are changing significantly as they, as they evolve from conceptual level designs into detailed designs, and whether or not those estimates may go up, which in many, many cases they do, or there may be occurrences with different types of projects that there may be the opportunity to, to identify cost savings as you move through the design processes.
Thank you. I've got just one comment on the report in general.
You're going to answer, you can ask questions. You can't make comments on information.
Okay, I'll do it this way. Is it accurate to say...
Very good. Well done.
...that the total development charges detailed in this report is $61.6 million? ...that the total development charges detailed in this report is $61.6 million? And is it accurate to say that the expenditures with the, in total, for these capital expenditures come to $215.7 million to be expended from 2015 through to, oh, maybe a decade later? So am I correct in surmising that that is the type of questions that council will have in front of us?
CEO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in response to the question by councillor, I assume he's asking about all of the projects that are listed in the report, and if so, I haven't totaled up, but it would be in the range of $200-plus million in total cost. The components of financing do or are reflected. The biggest shares of development charges for which the bylaws substantiate the charge would be approximately 60 to 65 million, I think. And the other major component of the Third Crossing, which is the other road here, does consider financing of at least 50% of the project cost from grants. So that's how the components are made up.
Thank you. Let's see. I think that, trying to figure out a question.
Questions only.
Yes, I know. The... When we have, when I spoke to the Treasurer last fall, we only had $11 million in the development charges fund. And one of my concerns is, don't worry, these are boardroom clauses. One of my concerns is that we keep saying there are development charges available for different projects, but we're using the same ones. Like, well, we have $15 million here, whatever you choose to do, the priority, we'll switch that $15 million to wherever project you happen to have in mind, council. So do we have the capacity to raise this kind of DCs?
So, that is a great question, but that's outside of the scope of this report. It's a question we should absolutely ask. You're going to have the opportunity to ask it, but not here. Because this, that is outside the scope. This is just asking for financial parameters on what these projects are. It's not getting into the details of what we can and cannot do with the development charges by law. But we need to get into that, but just not here.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions related to these information reports? Okay, so nothing on number two. Number three, update regarding RFI/RFP process for 305-323 Rideau Street. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, just a couple of quick questions. I note that we sent a lot of information out in various ways. We only got one RFI back. I don't know if that's typical, I'm new to this, but I just wanted to know what our attendance was like on the site tours in terms of this. Where did the interest drop off, is what I'm wondering?
Mr. Beach.
So in terms of the site, it isn't atypical to receive one or two bids on this type of property. I don't have the exact numbers of who showed up for the site tour. There were quite a number of companies that picked up the packages that were interested, and we did go out and try to get a lot of interest, but the actual bids that were received was one. It is a brownfield site. It's got a designated, our designation with the heritage on it as well, so that's not atypical that we would only get one bid for that type of property.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so no other questions? Miscellaneous business. Number one, that as requested by the Canadian Institute of Plumbing and Heating, council proclaim March 11, 2015 as World Plumbing Day in the city of Kingston. Can I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Shell, seconded by Councillor O'Sannick. Do we have a parade for that day? World Plumbing Day. Please vote. That carries. That the resignation of Mr. Venicio Rabello from the Committee of Adjustment be received with regret. Can I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Shell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm. That carries. That the resignation of Mr. Dave McWilliam, Technical Representative, Kingston Frontenac Lennox and Addington Public Health from the Waterfront Master Plan Working Group be received with regret. Can I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Allen, seconded by Councillor Turner. Please vote. That carries. That Ms. Stephanie Skibaris be appointed to the Waterfront Master Plan Working Group as the Kingston Frontenac Lennox and Addington Public Health Technical Representative. Moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Councillor Allen. Please vote. That carries. New motions. Number one, moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Councillor Shell. Whereas currently, under Ontario Regulation 282-98, the new multi-residential property class excludes the original residential units. When a property is expanded beyond six units, and may substantially increase property taxes to landlords, which is a major disincentive to constructing additional units, even if a landlord has such capacity. And whereas the province is encouraging urban intensification, including secondary suites, in order to increase housing stock and affordability under their provincial policy statements, therefore be it resolved that the city of Kingston encourage the Ontario government to amend legislation to allow for an increase in units up to a maximum of 10 units on the land built to code, and that the tax class be established as new multi-residential for the entire property, including the original units, in order to encourage additional density in both new and renovated apartments, and that copies of this motion be shared with the Premier of Ontario and both leaders of the opposition, AMO and FCM, and all Ontario municipalities with a population greater than 30,000. Councillor Neil.
Thank you. And I want to thank my secondor, who also sits on Housing and Homelessness with me, and I want to thank the CAO who was able to actually identify the Ontario regulation that I was referring to. So that assistance was helpful. This motion comes out of the fact that a friend of mine, who is now a small, owns a number of small rental units, six plexes, came to me a couple of years ago to point out that he had capacity to build two additional bachelor apartments, or one bedroom apartment, in the basement of his unit. And he had designed it and everything else, and then he discovered the tax ramifications of that would be, the additional rent would take about 15 years for him to recoup what he'd be paying in additional rent. The PPS, the provincial policy statements, talks a lot about the need for urban intensification. And we've adopted and continue to expand our secondary suites policy in order to address that. Yet this form of taxation and the bias for developing additional units in smaller unit apartments, in fact, precludes, makes it totally unfeasible for somebody to add a seventh, or an eighth, or a ninth unit, even though they may have that capacity. So all this motion is doing, because it's not within our powers or parameters, is asking the province of Ontario to do what, at first blush, seems like a really sensible thing to do, in order to enhance our potential for intensification. So I would hope that this passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, we'll call the vote. And that carries. Number two, moved by Councillor Hutchison, seconded by Councillor McLaren. Whereas on the municipal election ballot of October 27, 2014, the public indicated by a vote of 67.09% to 32.91% that they do not support the establishment of a casino in Kingston. Therefore be it resolved that council instruct staff to take the appropriate steps in accordance with the Planning Act to amend the official plan and the zoning bylaws to not allow a casino gaming facility within the city of Kingston. Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. When this was put forward, I took the wording from staff at that time. Since then, they've contacted me and indicated that, no, that's the wrong one. Since they, interesting. Since then, they've contacted me and indicated that the wording isn't the way they need it to be in order that they can do everything necessary to change the official plan to not allow a casino within the vicinity of the city of Kingston. So I have that wording, and so does the, yes, so does the clerk, and we can read it this time. So the wording is that the new motion to be amended by deleting in paragraph 2 the words "in accordance with the Planning Act" to amend official plan and the zoning bylaws 2, and inserting words, and report back to council by May 2015 on measures, and measures, so that the new paragraph reads its follows. Therefore be it resolved that council instruct staff to take the appropriate steps and report back to council by May 2015 on measures to not allow a casino gaming facility within the city of Kingston. And the short aspect of this is, it's more complicated than it looked. And so legal and senior staff would like to be sure that they can cover all the bases, and that's it.
Okay, so we'll deal with the motion to amend first. It's moved by Councillor Hutchison, seconded by Councillor McLaren. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the amendment? So we'll call the question on the amendment first? Please vote. That carries. So now, on the motion as amended. Councillor Hutchison.
It's entirely got to do with the wording and facilitating staff's job.
That's fine. So that's on the main motion. Anybody else that wishes to speak to the main motion as amended? Councillor Strout.
Just, thank you, your worship. Just very quickly to say that I, the amendment, very, very, the explanation that this is a little bit more complicated than what the initial motion said is very helpful to me to frame this in my mind, so that I can support this motion. Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries. Motion number three is the revised motion that is in the addits. It says, it's moved by Councillor Hutchison, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that expenditures towards the acquisition of land and construction of the Wellington Street Extension, Southern Section, from Montreal Railway Streets to Bay Street, be halted effective immediately until further direction from council, and that staff be requested to prepare a comprehensive report for the March 24, 2015 council meeting that provides factual information of all aspects, directly or indirectly, related to the Wellington Street extension, including but not limited to the official plan, the transportation master plan, the development charges background study and bylaw, the employment land review, the K&amp;P Trail Project, the Doug Flur Park Visioning Exercise, and property interests such as Nine North Street, for the purposes of informing decisions and to provide full transparency on the matter. And that staff be requested to report back to council in May 2015 with the scope of work, timelines, and budget required to explore other potential alternative transportation solutions in place of the Wellington Street Extension, and address current and future traffic flows in the area to further inform council on the matter. And that the staff analysis of potential alternative transportation solutions in place of the Wellington Street Extension be presented within a demonstrated framework of and in accordance with the principles and values contained in the official plan, the Kingston Sustainability Plan, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the Kingston Climate Action Plan. Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you. You want a motion to withdraw the previous motion?
No, we've already done that on the addits, so we're just now dealing with the motion...
I just wanted to make sure we did that.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, on, this motion is the subject of much negotiation, with, to whom I can thank Councillor McLaren, and Councillor Neil, and the mayor, who did a little dance, I think, since Friday. So nevertheless, I think it captures the basic tenets of what all parties want to see. So for that reason, I would recommend, you know, voting for this, so we can start the process of examining the Wellington Street Extension, and allowing the public to take part in that consideration, and be able to evaluate the extension and the alternative transportation solutions. The, I believe that there are, when it was pointed out to me by the mayor, I, perhaps a little reluctantly, recognized that there were legal and planning considerations that had to be taken into account, and that, like the casino, which we've had like three stabs at now, the, we needed to change the official plan for starters, and some possibly the development charges study, and the transportation master plan, and that these have to be done in a certain manner. And so I think if that's the route we have to take, that's the route we have to take. It's the best route. As pointed out to me by the city solicitor, the Planning Act affords for people to be able to, to appeal and look at different, to bring forward their concerns to council and other avenues. And that's a good thing, because it works for those of economic interest and for citizens alike. I'm not sure it's a completely equal process, but at least it's there, and it would be a worse society if it wasn't. So, and finally, the last aspect of this is, talks about how the staff analysis of a potential alternative transportation solutions in the place of the Wellington Street Extension be presented within demonstrated framework in accordance with the principles and values. That, I don't expect to be that easy, but I think it needs to be done. And there are many values, many principles, that we, as a city, have signed on for. The pillars of sustainability, the four poles of sustainability, and other related sustainability principles. And as a city, we need to say whether we truly believe in them or not. And so I'm expecting, when we get this back, that there will be demonstrated framework, and demonstrated that it's in accordance with the principles and values of those important plans. For example, the Kingston Climate Action Plan indicates that we did not meet our greenhouse gas emission target. And it gives a number of ways we could do it, like cutting down on single... And it gives a number of ways we could do it, like cutting down on single acts of vehicles is a big one. And there are other actions in there that as a community we need to do. So I look forward to this and I look forward to further public involvement and we will see how that evolves out. And I encourage everybody in the public and on council to involve themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Neil.
Thank you. I too want to thank my colleagues, the mayor and, and Council Hutchison, Council McLaren. You worked very diligently to come up with what I think is, is a good compromise that we can all support. Basically, do, would I have preferred the original motion? Yes, I would have. Because I strongly believe that council should make policy as a representative democracy and that we shouldn't feel that a threatened lawsuit should make us move away from those policies that are strongly supported by the community, by the, the members of this council. Every official plan amendment that's ever happened comes out of a policy decision, either made by planners or made by council. And the fact that, and we had a perfect example today. Last council by a seven-six vote, and I will say again, foolishly decided that we should host a casino. The official plan amendment came out of that policy decision. It wasn't a groundswell of the community saying, let's amend our official plan so that we can include a casino. The motion that we just passed unanimously calls for us to abandon that policy once and for all, and that needs an OP amendment. And so it's policy-driven OP amendments. And I think that's the healthiest way to do it, rather than some vague suggestion that we might get sued if we adopt this policy. If the community overwhelmingly wants something, and I think in this case they do, I received, and I did the count this morning, but I received, looking at all of the emails and, and letters that I've received in my packages, on a 14 to 1 basis, people saying, we need to protect the parkland. So that's a policy that I think council needs to move forward with. Yes, it'll be helpful to get all of this information and to consider all of this information, but ultimately, we should, as a policy decision, remove the official, from the official plan and remove from the transportation master plan any reference to, to especially the southern portion of the William Street, William, I'm so used to saying Williamsburg, the southern portion of the, of the express. So, so Wellington Street Express, we will have an opportunity with the information to say, thanks but no thanks. And I think that's where we need to go. Thank you.
Council Holland.
Thank you, your worship. So I certainly appreciate all the hard work that's gone into some of the revisions over the last week and have also received the outpouring of opposition to the proposed, the earlier version of, I guess, the planning that centered around Wellington Street Extension. So I'm happy to support this motion and, and move forward in the direction that the public is clearly asking us to, to consider, which is protecting green space. And just, I know a lot of people and the delegations have done such a wonderful job articulating the issues involved here, so I don't want to go on about that. I do though want to just touch on whether or not there's a need for such a road, and which is why we're trying to move back, move away from that and look at alternatives. And as councillor for Kingscourt, Rito District, a north-south arterial would seem like something that would benefit the community I represent. I have to say, based on my unofficial traffic study through months of canvassing in the area, that there wasn't support for the Wellington Street Extension. And as time went by and the more people I met, the more, it certainly wasn't a huge opposition, but there, I started to realize that there are a lot of people in the area who don't rely on vehicles, who use public transit, and a lot of the, a lot of these people don't own vehicles, can't afford a vehicle. So I think it's important when we're making these kinds of decisions, and at some point council is going to potentially be faced with the decision of whether or not taxes are going to go up. And, and we know at some point they have to go up, and they probably have to go up far more than anyone would like to see that happen. And I just, I don't think proposing a road that certainly doesn't meet our objectives, stated objectives as a city, but also doesn't benefit in any way people who don't own vehicles. I think it's going to be a really tough sell to talk about the future of how we're going to, how we're going to bring in revenue for the city and where that, that money's going to go. So I support the motion. Another reason that it's, it's very important to the area I represent is that Doug Flur Park is the nearest waterfront available to people in the Kingscourt area, for example. And I, I also want to, you know, take this opportunity to urge staff, to urge my colleagues that as we move forward developing some of the industrial lands along the waterfront, that we continue to see that as an opportunity to do things right, to see ourselves as sort of looking at a frontier. It's not just a matter of, okay, the land has, has, is changing over from an industrial use and should therefore just instantly be put to some other productive use in economic terms, but that, these are areas that are prized, essential to the, the well-being of the community. And in particular, there are people, when there's a north-end waterfront park, people in the north benefit from that, and those are the people I represent. So I certainly don't want to see any initiative go forward that privileges those people who use cars and takes away from the people who, who really benefit, people all over the city and particularly in the north end, who benefit from that beautiful green space. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm, will you take the chair?
Yes, and I recognize you.
Thank you. As, as Council Hutchison has said, this motion was the result of some rather intensive negotiations between the two of us and then later a couple of other individuals as well. And I am very supportive of this motion because in my view, it strikes a compromise. It says, we're going to look at other options to the Wellington Street Extension, but we're going to do it in the right way. Now, this comes back to a comment that Councillor Neil made. It's very important that I make this clear. We were not being threatened with lawsuits because we were thinking of taking out the Wellington Street Extension. We were being threatened with lawsuits because we were thinking of doing it the wrong way without a process of transparency and public input and the necessary studies and analysis that would be required to justify making that change. And so really what we're doing here is we're saying, we're going to take the right process to get all of the information, to get the big picture, to understand what's really at stake, to look at the pros and the cons, to look at the options, and I think that that is something that a, that a smart council should do. So I think that this is absolutely the right course of action. I have no idea what the outcome is going to be. I'm not willing to prejudge it one way or the other because I think that we should get all of the information first. Another comment that was made was about, we want something that's consistent with the sustainability vision of the city. And I fully support that because our sustainability vision is all about balance. It's balancing the environmental concerns, the economic concerns, the social concerns and the cultural concerns. So we're looking for that balance. Balance sometimes requires that you need a little bit of road infrastructure for the people that have cars, and you can have some bike infrastructure for the people that ride bikes, and you can have some pedestrian infrastructure for the people that are walking. A balanced approach means that you cover everything, that you don't exclude one group in favor of the others. So we're looking at something that, is there a way that we can accomplish all of those things together? I have made no secret of the fact that I am a big proponent of redevelopment of the inner harbor. I see tremendous potential for that area. I do think that there is some infrastructure that is required. What kind of infrastructure? Well, this is the sort of information that we need. There's been no significant infrastructure investment into that area for decades, and there hasn't been any significant redevelopment for decades. I think that there's a link between those two. However, I also believe in the importance of waterfront green space. So is there an option that we can do both? That we can have the necessary infrastructure investment and the investment in our waterfront green space? At the very least, we need to investigate to see whether we can have both of those things. We may have to make a tough decision down the road. It might be a decision that isn't going to make everybody happy, but at least we'll have all the information before we make that decision. So I am happy to support this. I'd encourage all of council to support this. Let's get all the information, let's understand what's at stake, and then we'll make the right decision. Thank you very much.
I return the chair to you.
Thank you. Council Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. I support this motion. For the last 14 years, I've worked right next door to Doug Flur Park, and I see a coworker in that corner and a former coworker in that corner. We know how beautiful that park is, just like all the other residents that live right near there. In the summertime, when you walk by, you don't even wa, you don't even notice like where you're walking to because as you're walking down the path, you're just staring at the waterfront because it's so beautiful with the blue and the contrasting green, and it's just so calm and tranquil there. And then you walk back to work and again, you're not watching, you're just like watching the waterfront. It's just gorgeous. And what I like most about this motion is that it's looking for the potential alternative transportation solution so that the park could possibly be preserved. And we've had some great ideas being sent to us in the many emails that we've received. One idea for Rito Street right near Queen Street, it could be one way and then maybe Montreal Street be one way the other direction, you know, like let's try that idea. Or to pave Baggett Street all the way to Russell and then open up the street over to Rito because it's closed off right now, you know, finishing off that gridwork pattern off of on Baggett Street. There's so many ideas and let's explore them and see what comes back. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Strout.
Thank you, your worship. I, I think it's starting to look like we, this, as many have already commented, we might have hit upon a motion that is not only better written, it's more representative of, of more people around the horseshoe. I just want to restrict my comments to one aspect that, that I was reminded of when your worship was speaking. The idea with the develop, the development being linked to the infrastructure, in a sense, you could rephrase that to say, build it and they will come. Build the roads and they will, it will bring the development. And I think that, that there is an element of truth to that, but it's also true of green infrastructure. So what we've heard tonight is that the, there is a large portion of our population that is crying out desperately for that green infrastructure, whether it's walkable pathways in nature or bikeways, or whether it's waterfront or, or a park. It's green infrastructure, and I would add to that, trees as well. Trees, the green infrastructure is also something that, the more trees you put into place, the more people come to that park if the park was formerly devoid of trees. Build it and they will come. And, and the idea of balance is, is perfectly put. We, we need a balanced approach for development in the city, and that balance must not only look at the needs of all the residents, whether they're walking, biking, driving, or on a unicycle, that you need to have balance between the gray infrastructure and the green infrastructure. And right now, because we were using thinking from another time, when roads, roads, roads was the thinking, we have an imbalance between those things, and we need to right that balance. And the first thing we can do is maximize our green space and our active transportation pathways, and people with cars will still be able to get from point A to point B. We're not taking away all the roads, we're just talking about balance. Green is the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Camden.
Thank you, worship. I have a question for staff with regards to the brownfields, industrial lands around the extension. Do we know the actual scale of the size of those properties that we're looking to redevelop? I think that there may be a bit of a misconception, people saying, we don't necessarily need it for traffic purposes, but they don't even necessarily know what scale of land we're looking to redevelop. It could be a very significant parcel.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through Mr. Mayor, I don't have the information in terms of the size of the parcels that are located there, but we do have information that's included in the employment land study, that we are going to bring that information back as part of the March 24th report. So you will have that information as part of the report in terms of the, the parcels, their size and where they're located, and what type of access they would require to enable redevelopment.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that I will be supporting this motion. I think that Ed Smith's delegation, where he said that you should keep an open mind and look at all alternatives, and I think that is, with a lot of new councillors that we have here, there's a lot of information to, to take in, and until we look at all the information and, and interpret that, then I don't think that we should make quick decisions and wipe things off the official plan without everybody as a, as a council looking at all that information. I hope, I hope we do find a second alternative. I hope that we find something that, that works better than the Wellington Street Extension. I'm certainly optimistic that maybe we can do that. I think it's unrealistic to think that everyone's going to stop driving cars and we're all going to, everyone here is going to buy a bike and, and we're all going to become cyclists. I think that's unrealistic. That's not the world that we live in, unfortunately. It would be great if it did, but it's, it's not reality. And I, I think that we can all agree that, and maybe I'm looking at a different park. The water is beautiful. When you enter that, whether you're entering that property through North Street, Wellington Street, or Orchard Street, in my opinion, it looks like a derelict property. There is water there, but it's an abandoned, there's one of the nicest buildings in the city, a limestone building that could be falling over as we speak. It isn't necessarily the beauty that everybody sees. It, if I brought somebody from another city to that park, they would wonder why we let the potholes end up the way we did and why there's no real trail, certain trails along certain parts. The waterfront is beautiful. The property has an enormous amount of potential, and I hope that as a council and as a city, we can realize that potential. But I don't, I think it's misleading to say that it's absolutely spectacular, this park. It is in incredibly rough shape, and some of those buildings, that, that building on North Street needs to be revitalized and there needs to be an enormous amount of revitalization to optimize that, that property.
Thank you. Next on my list is Council Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just want to thank Councillor Hutchison and Councillor McLaren for working on this along with you to bring this to us. I think it's a, a great fresh look for a fresh council to look at an issue and a project that's been on the books for a long time. I think that also brings a lot of opportunities for staff who are bringing this information together for us, because maybe we've made assumptions or thought about things the way we thought about them 10 years ago, five years ago, 15, 20 years ago, when we started looking at this. And so we might be able to bring new perspectives. We talked about new technologies earlier in regards to this. There might be new technologies that provide new solutions and new approaches. And so bringing all that information together at the beginning of a council term for us to make a great decision with information, with consultation in the public, we've heard from the public, we're going to continue to hear from the public, I think that is going to help us a lot. And so this motion is, speaks to that in a lot of ways in terms of providing opportunities for both council and staff and the, the community. for both council and staff and the community to come together on this. And I'm looking forward to seeing how some of these new trends in the workforce and the environment that we're hearing about affect some of the plans and some of the perspectives that went into writing these documents almost 10 years ago or longer. So I'm going to support this motion because I think we should take that information and make a great decision as a council.
Is there anybody that has not spoken that wishes to speak? Counselor Turner.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Yes, I would like to speak to this motion and I do support this motion. It's been a long week. There's been a lot of information that has been sent to me through my emails, a lot of concerned citizens about this issue. But I think, I think we've come to a compromise here and a lot of people around this horseshoe have said a lot of very good, made a lot of good points and I think it's about balance and I think it's about looking into the future. And I think we have to do our due diligence when we look at this and I think we need to take some time and give it to staff and have them bring back their report. So I'm going to support this motion and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson, you have the right to speak last if you would so desire.
And I will be, just briefly. The, I want to thank what it sounds like quite a bit of support on council and for people considering this, this motion, as was said, a compromise motion. And I'm, you know, optimistic about where we can go with this. I would point out that, that when people are talking about the park, they're talking about how invigorating and interesting and aesthetically pleasing it is, even in its current shape. So Nine North Street is being redeveloped and there is a Doug Flure Park vision exercise which we had passed as a council last term and it's in the process. So what people would like to do is maintain and enhance the park and to preserve very scarce green waterfront parkland. So just to be clear about where people are coming from, and no one believes that everyone will be buying, riding a bike. If we get into characterizations like that, we're not going to reach a balance. We're not going to reach a good compromise or a good end. So of course, there will be cars, but there may be many fewer than we think, they may be smaller than we think. We may have better ways doing, of finding out how to direct them where we'd like them to go. And of course, we will have to take into account the economic, social, cultural, and of course, the environmental aspects of all this. And as the mayor indicated, it's a tension between those pillars, hopefully a creative tension. But you have, the problem is, you have to think about them simultaneously and not let one trump the other. I've been on council, this is my ninth year, and quite often, the economic narrowly conceived trumps the other pillars sometimes. I think we're going to be a progressive and city with a good future, economic future. We have to learn to think about that differently, just as many other cities in this country, but across the world are doing. And we have to take that into account. So I'm looking forward to how this turns out and I, I hope everyone will vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the question on the motion. And that carries unanimously. Number four, approved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren. Whereas citizen volunteers in the city of Kingston have traditionally played a valuable role in helping the city to form policy and to ensure community participation in decision-making. And whereas our committee bylaw 2010-205 calls for all committees to meet as soon as possible after the day of the inaugural meeting of council and/or in December each subsequent calendar year to formulate its recommendations about a chair and vice chair, yet many committees have not yet met due to staff cancellations of meetings. And whereas the bylaw also sets a number of required meetings per annum for such committees, yet many committees have failed to meet in many cases due to staff cancellation of meetings. And whereas the bylaw also says 2.10 Agenda, the agenda of every committee will be structured as follows and includes as items and eight motions, nine notices of motion, and also stipulates 2.11, motions on committee agendas. Motions introducing new policy or procedure matters must be in the hands of the clerk by 12 o'clock noon one week prior to the regular committee meeting for inclusion in the orders of the day. Yet committee clerks have been instructed not to accept any motions that may recommend future staff action to council for approval, even though this has not been past practice nor has the bylaw been amended. And whereas the bylaw also stipulates 2.1, except as otherwise provided for in this bylaw, all committees must conform to the rules governing the procedures of a meeting of council as outlined in the council procedural bylaw. Therefore be it resolved that staff be instructed to schedule meetings of all committees as soon as possible to ensure that chairs and vice chairs are appointed as stipulated in bylaw 2010-205, and that all chairs and vice chairs be given a copy of the bylaw and committee terms of reference, and that all motions duly moved, seconded, and on time be accepted for the agenda, and that all committees shall be governed by the rules set out in bylaw 2010-205, including bylaw 2010-1, the council procedural bylaw, until such bylaws are amended. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I, I think the motion itself pretty much speaks to itself. Some of you may have recalled that late in our last term, there was a motion that came forward suggesting that we not appoint people to committees until we do a review, which all, reviewing committees is something that most, happens in most terms of council. That was, over, that portion of that was overwhelmingly defeated. What was passed was that we would have a review of our committee structure, which I supported then and I continue to support now. I guess the frustration is that we have an existing bylaw, which I've outlined some of the prime sections of that bylaw, yet we don't seem to be abiding or following those directions of that bylaw at this time, which is frustrating to some of the members of the community that have applied and, and successfully been appointed to committees. There have been, and, and these are committees, I think that as, as we all attend those meetings and see just the, the amount of technical expertise that's on KEIF, the amount of community involvement that's on KEIF, yet KEIF hasn't met yet and have had several months of canceled meetings, which is a frustration to those members of KEIF who have put their names forward in good faith, wanting to be engaged. We've all been given questionnaires and asked about where we stand on open governance and where we stand on participatory democracy. Our committee system is the closest thing we have to participatory democracy in this city right now. And yet, here's a perfect example. It was pointed out to me, I attended the, the introduction to committees meeting that just occurred. And somebody pointed out to me that this will be the third or fourth me, such meeting that he's gone to, yet on his particular committee, they've, they only met once last year. So we've celebrated volunteers once last year, once this year. We had a volunteer appreciation night. All of those cost money and I totally applaud them, but at the same time, that particular committee, it says in the bylaw, shall meet four times a year. It met once last year to appoint the chair and the, and the vice chair, never met again. Uh, KEIF has had several months of canceled meetings. Yes, we may very well change our str, and I hope we do redefine and, and change our strategic vision and our strategic plan. But the reality is that the arts advisory committee has working groups that have been set up that are helping staff to achieve the goals set forth by our cultural master plan. Those aren't going to be changed by us at our strategic planning session. Those are ongoing things. Similarly, KEIF has working groups that make recommendations through the process that address Kingston's sustainability plan, for instance. But they haven't met for quite a while and, and, and when they're told that a, a meeting has been canceled, it's often because staff have no business to bring forward. But as I've pointed out with some of these quotes from our council procedural bylaw, we're, we're inviting and we have in the past committees to discuss issues and to bring forward through the appropriate channels, recommendations to council. And council can choose to, to, to support them or not. But we, we shouldn't alter the rules under council procedural bylaw unilaterally. And that's, that's the frustration, I think, that some people are finding with this. I invite anybody to bring forward amendments. It can be done by council and mover and a seconder in council.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. It can be done by a recommend, uh, recommendation of, in a CAO report. But as long as this is our existing council procedural bylaw, I think we, we should respect that we expect the rest of the community to abide by their, their bylaws that we, we present. We should be doing the same until they're amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bowman, will you take the chair?
Yes, and I recognize you, your worship.
Thank you. I have some serious concerns with this motion. My biggest concern with this motion is that we are addressing a major change to the way the structure of council and committees work three months into a new council. And to be quite frank, a number of you that are new to council haven't even been in place long enough and haven't done enough committee work to really understand what's working and what isn't. I think it's unfair to bring it forward at this point. So let me take a moment to explain the structure that we have in place right now, provide a rationale for it, and then we can invite debate at that point. So right now, council is the gatekeeper. We decide what we spend money on, what we don't, and we are the ones that decide where staff time goes and where it doesn't. Because if staff time goes to project A, then that means that there's no staff time left to go to project B. We are placed in the position of being the big picture, establishing our priorities, setting the direction for our city. That's why we were elected and we need to be held accountable for that. We are to provide leadership to our community. The committees are in place to help us to carry out our vision. We're going to go into strategic planning, we're going to establish what our priorities are, and the committees are going to help to carry that out. The reason why a number of committees haven't been meeting of late is because we haven't established our strategic direction yet. So out of respect, staff have been holding back the committees because they want council to take the lead, not the committees. The way that we do it right now, we start any direction to a committee at council. So we make the argument, we decide whether it's a priority, and then we task an individual committee to go and to carry out that work. If we were to change and go back to the system that Counselor Neal has suggested, then it's going to be reversed. Individual committees will start to be able to make recommendations about how to use staff time. Now, yes, it's true, it's going to come up to council, but think about how that would look. We're, we would have to keep shooting down our own citizen committees because we're like, no, that's not in our strategic direction, no, that's not in our strategic direction. I personally would prefer not to have to do that. So what we have instead is where counselors are populated in all those advisory committees. And so if a committee wants to go in a particular direction, they talk to the counselor and the counselor then brings it to council, convinces the rest of us that this is a priority, and then we can put it in motion. It's about who leads and then who follows. And we, I have tremendous respect for the individuals in our community, I have tremendous respect for their expertise, this is not about that. But the end of the day, who are the leaders? We were elected to lead and we should not be abdicating that responsibility. So I am asking council to vote against this or at the very least, to wait for a year. Because by our procedural rules, if a motion loses, it can be brought back in a year's time and is not a motion to reconsider. So take a year, look at the way we do it, understand why it is that we do it the way that we do it, and then we can always revisit it at that point. But there's good reasons why we have the practice that we do. Thank you very much. Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll return the chair to you.
Okay, I, I have the chair, so point of order.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I believe you just made a motion to defer this for a year. Is that not right?
No, I suggested that someone could make a motion, but I have actually recommended voting against it, but I'll leave that up to council. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. So I do see the value of the way the business is structured now, the structure as you've outlined it. And it's, it is a little bit confusing because we're hearing that these are the bylaws and then we're also hearing that there's a structure in place that seems to be more unofficial. Be it as may, it does seem to have a great deal of, makes, it makes a lot of sense to me, I think to, to, or there's, I, I take your point, I think there are good arguments that, that you've put forward. However, I disagree and I do support the motion because I feel like the issues that you're concerned with, that are, sorry, that might be of concern, can be dealt with through members of council on committees. So for example, council member on a committee would, through discussions with members of the committee, have the opportunity to determine whether or not the motion that is potentially, potentially coming forward from that committee, whether or not it would be feasible, whether or not it would pass at council. So as counselors, the onus is on us to determine what might interfere with the ability to pass the motion. One of those issues might be the amount of staff time involved. That's something that we can consider in that committee and advise committee members about the amount of staff time involved. Also, we could advise committee members about whether or not the motion fits with our strategic direction and, and if not, how we might adapt it if that was possible. So I think in the spirit of a more participatory form of democracy, I would rather deal with those potential issues and concerns at the committee level. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship. I would just basically like to voice my support for what you mentioned, which was, some of us have only met and been involved in certain things one or two times. So to make a change like this at this point, kind of seems a little bit premature. We're three months in, so with that, I'd like to put a motion possibly to defer this until nine months' time is passed, in which case we would have roughly a year's experience dealing with these committees and kind of realizing the change that we're actually putting in place.
So there's a motion to defer on, that has been put forward by Deputy Mayor Bowman's there a seconder, seconded by Counselor Shell. Debate is only with respect to time or place. Okay, we'll call the vote. This is on the motion to defer. Deputy Mayor Bohm, you still have the floor if you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I was surprised at this motion when I read it, because I have been on many committees, including a lot of advisory committees. And we certainly were told a good four years ago when I became a councillor that particularly advisory committees did not make motions that would affect staff time, that we were there as a support, as you said, for the processes that are in place as a council. I also realized that there are some committees that tended to be created in response to community concerns. I would think of the Near Neighborhood Advisory Committee, the Memorial Centre Advisory Committee were two, that haven't met as often as they did in the beginning when there was a lot of stress. And of course, the Rural Advisory Committee was recreated a couple of years ago because it had been canceled by a previous council. So there is a lot of flux happens. I realize we have the rules. We also have, I remember when somebody said, "How many committees are there that you could put your name forward for?" And I said, "I think it's 35." It's a huge number of committees, and it does require some good structure to handle it. Or we would be pulled on in about 100, well, 35 directions at least. I haven't heard complaints myself from the different committees that I'm on, that people feel constrained. I certainly know as a councillor, I've had to do exactly what Councillor Holland was saying, which is, "I don't think that's going to fly." I realize why you're passionate about it, but politically, I don't think it will fly. And having to do that, plus be a councillor, it's a big, it can be a big stress. But it's part of the job. I'm not in favor of this for exactly the reasons the mayor said and others, because it's hitting us very quickly with a new council in terms of something that probably some don't even understand what the problem might be. I do know that there's going to be a report coming about the committees that was passed last year, and I think that this actually might help, as you write the report, that this has come up, that it's now an issue, that it will actually help give you some direction. And I find that's what often happens with council. We get direction in some interesting sideways positions. So I won't be supporting this. I do recognize that we have quite a job as a councillor and quite a job for all staff and council, trying to keep the message moving in an orderly direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councillor McLaren.
Thank you, your worship. I have two points to make. When I served on the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, there was at least one case where it was canceled because there was no one to talk about, issues that we had to learn about. And by the end of the mandate of that particular committee, we felt a little rushed. If you recall, there was a big rush in the last little while to get the report done, and there was some concern as to whether we would actually meet our mandate. And for that reason, I would suspect that it would have been better had we not canceled that one meeting because there were no staff presentations. We could have started working on that report, had a better chance to think about it, structure it, and not have rushed it at the end. Also, if I may ask you to consider what message we are sending right now if we were to fail in this motion, that perhaps our bylaws don't really need to be followed? I would submit to you that that's probably the wrong message to send. Thank you.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I think we need to think long and hard about this. We are new to council, and if we're going to proceed with this motion by Councillor Neil and Councillor McLaren, we're going to be tying up our staff. And how can we ask our staff, if we've got all these other issues we've got to deal with, to do this? Like, I think we need to think about this, and I think we, as Councillor Shell said, there's a number of committees, I believe there's 43 committees out there, and I don't think we should have them doing make-work projects either. If there's work for them, there's work. If there's no work for them, then let's tie them together, let's put them in an umbrella committee, and give them a larger committee so that there is work for them. But, you know, I don't, I think we need to think about this, and I think we need to take our time. Let's give ourselves six months, let's give ourselves seven months, but I don't think we should vote in favor of this. You should vote against it. Thank you.
Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you. I think that the way, I have to disagree with the way the mayor presented the whole It's true that staff time is an issue with almost anything that gets done, and they're competing priorities. The way the committee system worked when I came on council, and it was quite a vigorous system, and we engaged citizens because we felt they had a contribution to make, and quite often, they had special knowledge. In fact, a number of our committees have technical representatives, because, like KEIF and others. And so we recognize that there's expertise out there that we, as councillors, do not have. The first thing that I would point out is, the committee system is not necessarily about us as councillors. It's about doing work that needs to get done, and to consider, yes, council initiatives, council policies of the city, and so on. But in some cases, particularly some committees like KEIF, it was particularly developed so that they would be able to tell us what was important, what we should be doing about the environment, and advise us accordingly. Why? Because they usually knew more about it than we did. And so, and many good initiatives started there. And in fact, when I was on the first council from '06 to '10, we changed the mandate so they could report directly to council. Now, that never happened. I don't know why, but it never happened. So they weren't going around willy-nilly, doing things that you wouldn't want them to do. But they did look at a number of initiatives, and some of them were put forward to council to be considered, and some never made it out of committee, because they did the research themselves in the working group, with little or no staff time involved in that research. So, yes, you're new, but the city goes on working, it doesn't, when we're not here, okay? There are policies, and we follow them, and we do, and things get done. The same thing happens with the committee process. We nominate people, yes, every, whenever we need to, but every four years, say. And that work goes on, whether you or I or the next councillor is on it or not. So, and that is a contribution. And the thing that really bothers me about this is that we are basically telling people, "Well, you volunteered, you wanted to do something for your city, but we're not going to let you meet," contrary to our bylaw. It's not all about us. It's about the city. It's about, it's about the way in which the organization works. And it's about citizens, and how much you value the input of citizens. And I happen to value it very much. And so I will vote for this, because it's pretty minimal. It's very minimal. It's just saying, "Let's have these committees meet." And we could, you know, if they have motions, they have to do with the Rome work internally to the committee, so be it. And occasionally, they might send something up to the committee that they are responsible to. It's like Arts Advisory reports to ARC. So they don't all make it through to council. You know, they get sent back and things like that. So I think it works. It works because we're getting people that are vitally interested in it, some of them are giving their time and their energy and their experience, and others are actually giving us real expertise, which we don't all have. And I think that's really important, because it broadens our collective mind and makes decisions deeper and richer and better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. What can I add to this debate to make it clearer what we're actually talking about? Well, I have, I have only three months' experience on the committees, but the, I got to admit, my eyebrows were raised a couple of times. Personally, I had a motion that did not make it to the committee that I thought it was appropriate to, in this case, the ITP. And the only explanation was simply that it involves staff direction and therefore must go to council. I took that at its word, and that's what happened. Ended up getting passed, and that was fine. I didn't really think about it again at that point. But now that I read the bylaws and I read this motion, I realize that what's really happening is that there, that staff is often running out of time. There is an acknowledgement by not only senior staff, but also by yourself, your worship, about the limited staff resources that we have, and that we're in this situation where we essentially don't, we've got to be careful, very careful, about what we're asking staff to do, because they can't do everything at once. Very, very mindful of that principle, because I'm a registered nurse in an intensive care unit, and I get doctor's orders all the time from sometimes junior residents, second-year residents, who don't really understand how things work, and they're often unnecessary orders. And we often do interfere and say, "Actually, you don't need to make that order." "Oh, I don't? Okay, I won't. Oh, thank you." It happens a lot in the ICU, and actually, because of this motion, I've been thinking about maybe I should let them make the orders and then just maybe tell my fellow nurses that, "Okay, well, they've made that order, we could quickly carry it out, and they need to learn what's unnecessary on their own," or something like that. I've been examining everything since this whole thing came up. But overall, there are certain principles that we must follow. First of all, city staff needs to be apolitical. So when the politicians, which is us, are sensing interference or hurdles or some things are being shunted off in different directions that we expected, that's not really, you know, the intention. So really...
So, point of order, I'm just, I'm just going to step in just on that point, because part of my role is to protect the integrity of staff. So I think it's important to clarify that staff were following a previous practice and direction of council not doing their own thing. So just to bring that clarity there, just to protect this integrity of staff, just after you just clarified that.
Thank you, your worship. I didn't mean in any way to make any judgments on what staff was doing. It's the perception from a councillor's point of view that their initiatives are somehow misplaced. The thing is, there's another principle that we need to always be mindful of, and that's staff time. So perhaps the solution is that we pass this motion, which is simply really have the committees meet and follow the bylaws. And maybe we need to all make a commitment to each other to stop wasting staff time so much, you know, which is an informal thing that we could do, rather than the reverse, which is, we are, you know, former council has directed us to, that we're not allowed to waste staff time in this way. So I think that the correct thing to do to continue to involve the public in these committees is to allow motions to come forward, and it is the responsibility of the individual councillors on those committees to voice concerns at the committee level in order to save staff time down the road. And as far as attendance of staff to meetings, if that's an issue, they can always revisit their own policy of how many staff need to come to how many meetings, who can cover for each other. We do that as nurses all the time. We cover for each other, and, you know, a solution can be found. So I think I will support this motion, but I will also be lobbying my fellow councillors to be very careful about the work that they generate at the committee level, or the potential of any motion that they might be bringing to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, I have to thank you, fellow councillors, because you keep bringing me motions that I have, I'm completely torn on, and I like that, because I have to struggle to know where my heart lies and look at the facts and listen to those around me as you speak, and I've listened to you all very carefully this evening, and I have scribbles on my iPad to mention that. So a few of my scribbles, one thing is, I just, I lament how early this came. I think this is really a discussion worth having, but we ratified these committees a month ago, literally, two council meetings ago, we ratified these committees. So the only KEIF that's been canceled was the one that was six days after we ratified it. And I just, I probably would be more prepared to have a decision to make on this kind of process a month, maybe two months from now. I've been to a few committee meetings, I'm getting a sense of it, and I've been to a few advisory committee meetings now, and I'm getting a sense of it. And so that is where I'm sad, I guess. We're also incredibly lucky, as a city and as a council, that we have committees with people who are coming to councillors and saying, "We want to have a voice, we want to participate, we want to be there." Councillor Holland mentioned that the, we want our government to be participatory, and I want that too. The public is asking that of us as a government, of us as a municipality, and we're the easiest form of government to be directly engaged in. And it's up to us, maybe not through this, or maybe through this, but through other initiatives, to take that signal and build a government that is participatory and that works. And I think, regardless of whether this passes or not, and I literally still don't have an idea when I'm going to vote, but whether this passes or not, it will be incredibly important that we take that signal about what we do in terms of engaging our engaged citizenry. Can I ask a question of staff in the middle of this? That's great. When was that committee review report meant to come? I've got two questions. I'll ask that one, and then I'll ask the next one. I'll ask both, actually. And then how many of the committees, do we know how many of the committees haven't met of the 35 so far?
Mr. Clerk?
Through your worship, that report is targeted for Q2. With respect to the question on the number of committees, there are a handful that have not met yet. I know KEIF is meeting next week, and I believe the other committee in question, the Memorial Centre Advisory Committee, that has not been scheduled as, at this point, we do not have any items for consideration by the committee.
And just as a follow-up question, so the Memorial Centre Committee would be the only committee without a chair, as well as KEIF, at this point?
I believe that's correct. There are other committees that are within the committee bylaws, such as the Two Courts of Revision, the Compliance Audit Committee, and those ones haven't met for years. So whether the motion goes forward, and we're going to bring forward the Court of Revision to select the chair and the vice chair, there are no local improvements for the committee to review at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I just, to summarize, I'm running out of time. I think this is a signal to us as a council that we have to think about this at a deeper level, and I think this is just an indicator, and we're going to see more of them. And I think if we want to be a smart council and a progressive council, we want to take that thought regardless of where this motion goes, and move forward in increasing the engagement in the way the public can engage with our city, and supporting staff and council in doing that. doing that.
No other comments? Counsel Neil, you have the right to speak last.
Thank you. And I'll just repeat a little bit of what I already said. We have an existing bylaw. All this motion, and I'm, I'm surprised at the amount of staff angst and that came forward, and the number of staff people who contacted me, asking me if I would withdraw this motion. The reality is that we have a council procedural bylaw. If we don't want to abide by that bylaw, I implore somebody to bring forward a motion to amend the bylaw, or in a CAO recommend report to come forward. Because otherwise, we are passing bylaws all the time and telling our citizens we need to abide by our bylaws. But when it comes to council procedure, we don't really need to necessarily. There have been very few committee meetings that have taken place, and I appreciate that we just did the appointments last month. When I referenced Keefe, it wasn't that it's only been the last committee meeting that got canceled after we did the appointments, or other committees. They were canceled for months and months prior to, to the new council being elected. I appreciate that, that Counsel Hutchison has a bit of a corporate memory, because the reality is, it was only in the last year and a half, two years, when suddenly committees were being discouraged from bringing forward motions, and that staff, without the concurrence of the chairs, were canceling meetings. I'll give you some examples. We have a Sunday farmer's market at Memorial Center. That came out of a motion, moved and seconded at that committee three years ago, that initially failed because staff had expressed some concerns and opposition to it, then was moved for reconsideration as a pilot project, taking into account some of staff's concerns, and it passed. And it did, and it came to council and was vigorously debated in council and passed at council. We now have a very, very successful farmer's market at Memorial Center because that's the way the system worked. You, the initial recommendation and report that came to housing, and Counsel Shell can concur with this, that came to, to housing and homelessness, had no provision for a women's shelter. That was hotly debated at the Housing and Homelessness Committee, and an amendment was brought forward that came to council, that was supported at council, and therefore, we have a, a women's shelter in, in Kingston, which we wouldn't otherwise have had with the original recommendation that came. So, and there's all kinds of other examples. I moved, and it was seconded, to EITP that we have a policy of good road maintenance for bicycle paths. That was debated at EITP and went forward as a recommendation initiated at EITP, that went forward as a recommendation to council, that passed. And those are three of many, many examples, and...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And so I really, really suggest that if, if we don't support this, then I think we need to do some kind of amendment to the policy because we can't be sending out the message, we pass committee bylaws, we pass bylaws, but we don't have to abide by them. And I think we lose the only perspective right now that we have for participatory democracy. So I strongly suggest we support this.
Thank you, Counsel Neil. So we are at 10:47, so what I propose is that we will call the question on this motion, and at that point I will ask for a motion to extend the meeting. So we will call the question first on new motion number four. Please vote. That passes by a vote of seven to five. At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the meeting. Moved by Counsel Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm. Counsel Ossanik to finish the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. This needs two-thirds to pass. New motion number five. Moved by Counsel Shell, seconded by Counsel Stroud, that a plant, that a meeting of the planning committee be held on April 2nd, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the council chamber. Is there any debate on this? Seeing none, we'll call the question. That carries. Number six. Moved by Counsel Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm. Whereas brave members of this community stepped forward in World War I and World War II to fight for king and country, and whereas many made the ultimate sacrifice in battle, and whereas interested supporters of the military community have requested an area be designated to commemorate the departure of the 21st Battalion and members of the Queen Stationary Hospital from Kingston 100 years ago in May 2015, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to bring a report to council in April 2015, after having completed consultation, to consider designating an area spanning from the Kingston Armories to Fort Frattonak as Valor District to commemorate the valiant military service of past Kingstonians, and that the report would include the cost options with either altering or adding the district signs, an implementation plan, and a proposed schedule for the installation of the signs. Counsel Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for counsel for extending the meeting and for also putting this on, approving the edits tonight. This was going to go to a committee, but as we were just talking about staff time and how valuable staff time is, we're trying to, if we can, reach a deadline of May, and so we thought it would be best to come to council and for this to come back to council so we can try to meet the May deadline. Where this is coming from is that on May 5th of this year is going to mark 100 years ago that Kingston sent the 21st Overseas Battalion and the Queen Stationary Hospital Corps right from the Kingston Armories overseas to fight World War I. And on that day that they left, they left by train from the Grand Trunk Station, 15,000 people lined up along Montreal Street, and the population of Kingston in 20, in 1915 was 20,000. So that's 70% of all Kingstonians lined up Montreal Street waving goodbye to them. And so, while members of the military community, they approached me and they were asking if we could possibly create a district, sort of like near Queens, there's the University District, so it'd be just certain streets down here where there's the significant military presence and history. So it'd be from the Montreal Street Armories down to Fort Frattonak. There is a map that staff have been given. It does not include the tragically hip way, so we're not going to be renaming Barrick Street. There's no renaming in this at all. It's just putting up signs, there's 16 intersections that would say Valor District. The same way down at Queens, we still have Aberdeen Street, we still have Vegas Street, it just says University District. It would be the same sort of way. So this is just asking for staff to prepare a report with costs and with, you know, like just approving the proposed boundaries, and then putting up the signs hopefully in May or whenever they can this summer to coincide with that 100-year anniversary of the battalion. There was an article in the Kingston Week Standard that day, on May 6th, after the battalion left by train, and so this would be a good way to commemorate that. And on May 5th, which just happens to be a city council night of this year, just to let everybody know that right before the council meeting, there is going to be some bands playing across the street at the train station, and then they're going to be marching over here. The mayor's going to be making some remarks in the town crier right before that council meeting on Tuesday, May 5th. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other debate, we will call the question. Please vote. Have no notices of motion tonight? Minutes.
Moved by Counsel Cannon, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that the minutes of the city council meeting number 2015-08 held Tuesday, February 17th, 2015, and the minutes of the special council meeting held 20, held February 23rd, 2015 be confirmed.
That's carried. Have some tabling of documents, we have a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws.
Moved by Counsel Turner, seconded by Counsel Shell, the bylaws 1 through 3 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Holland, that law three be given its third reading.
Motion to adjourn. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counsel Turner. Please vote. We're adjourned, and thank you very much.